Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, March 31st. I'll read the agenda. The Chair reserves the right to call items on the agenda out of order. The times that are listed for items are approximate times, and items may be reached earlier or later than the posted times. The listing of items is those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for a discussion to the extent permitted by law. So at 7:00 PM we'll have Citizens' Input, Topics Not Reasonably Anticipated by the Chair forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. 7:05 Selectmen's Update. 7:15 NPS Public Hearing. We'll have a discussion and vote on the Boston Cannons Lacrosse Home Games Application. At 7:25 Bill Yuchna, the School Business Administrator, will give us an update on the Town Hall Design. 7:35 Zoning Board of Appeals will have interviews with David Brown, Kevin Powers, Kurt Jagan, and Ari Weinstein. 7:45 we have Sharon Wasson scheduled to present the approval of Foxborough Affordable Housing Trust Regulations. 7:55 Mary Beth Bernard will provide a discussion, and we will vote on the DPW contract. At 8:00 PM we will talk about the Spring Warranty Articles, and at 8:15 Bill will provide us with a Town Manager Update. Can you give us the [inaudible]?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I'll just give a brief Selectmen's Update. Want to start off by wishing everyone a happy Passover and happy Easter for the upcoming week. I think maybe this is the first night we're meeting that hasn't been snowing on us, so I'm very happy about that. But want to say thanks again to the DPW and Public Safety for getting the entire town through this terrific winter season, so thank you very much. And we have up here the cards from all the children in the schools thanking the DPW for their work, so that's really great that they did that. And just want a quick reminder for everyone to please register for the Cleanup Foxborough Day that's scheduled for May 2nd. That'll be coming up quickly. All right, so we're scheduled for a public hearing at 7:15. Should we go through some action items, Jane?
The first one is regard to a reappointment to the Board of Registitors. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the reappointment of Rafaela Feinstein to the Board of Registitors for the term ending on April 4, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. The next is in regard to the Harvard Pilgrim Finish at the Fifty Road Race. This is a, it's the sixth annual Harvard Pilgrim Finish at the Fifty Road Race. Ten K will, I can't read the running. Oh, will begin outside the stadium, proceed on Route 1, then the streets of Foxborough, back to Gillette Stadium, to Patriot, to the stadium at the fifty-yard line. Same course as 2014. It's on July 3, 2015, 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. They presented a good plan in regard to notifying the residents and putting up information. They're going to have race route signs, the going up one week prior to the race, and I'm just asking as a courtesy to the town if the, if we can make it a requirement that they take down the signs after the race. I ask that at another race application. So I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for the Harvard Pilgrim Finish at the Fifty Road Race on July 3, 2015, 7:00 to 8:30 PM, adding the condition that the race route signs are removed after the race.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Jenny, this next item, Bill and I were just talking about this, and just going to have that reviewed where the, this is probably the first time that an elected board is putting forward a request like this for donations, so we'll just check in today.
We want to make sure there's no conflict there.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll pass on number three for today. We'll bring it back.
Okay. The next is from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's a letter of resignation. Shall I read the letter?
Yes, please.
It's quite a nice letter. This is from Kevin Penders in regard to his resignation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Dear Ms. Brew, on February 23, 2010, I was honored to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen as an alternate member to the Town Zoning Board of Appeals, ZBA, a position I have valued in a board whose role I have continued to grow in appreciation for since that time, given the issues it takes on, given the issues it takes on the hard work and commitment that its members give as a result. During these five years, I have had the privilege to work with an excellent group of people in the review and adherence of the town zoning regulations with an eye towards maintaining the unique characteristics of the community that make Foxborough so desirous a destination for us all. That being said, at this time I find that my life commitments outside the ZBA require that I take a step back from this obligation, and as such, I write to resign from my current position as alternate member on the ZBA effective immediately. It is my intention that by doing so, I will accord the Board of Selectmen and the ZBA a sufficient amount of time to engage in appointing a replacement member, so that whomever that individual may be will be on board and actively able to engage during what appears to be an active spring docket, including another intensive FOTB discussion. My replacement is fortunate in that the ZBA finds itself in a good place from the perspective of personnel. While not seeking to exclude any individual with whom I have served in the past, I do take this effort to pay a particular note of thanks to the current ZBA of Neil Foster, Bonnie Orver, Kim Mellon, and Chris Bain for their engaged discussions and ongoing commitment to the town. I also would be remiss if I did not take the opportunity to remind the Board of Selectmen of the excellent resource that the town has been fortunate to have at its fingertips for so long. My tutelage and experience on the ZBA would have been significantly diminished without the resource guidance and counsel offered so capably and gracefully by both Bill Caspera and Diana Gray. In short, thank you for the opportunity to serve the town as a member of the ZBA these past five years. It has been a privilege to do so. I look forward to seeing you around town, hopefully at a library event or program. Remaining active in our community and on the Board of the Library Trustees and serving as a resource for the ZBA or the Board of Selectmen should such a need arise in the future. Very truly yours, Kevin F. Penders, Esquire.
That's very nice.
So I move that the Board of Selectmen accept the letter of resignation from, from the Zoning Board of Appeals of Kevin F. Penders, Esquire, with regret, and thank him for his service.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Jenny, I'm going to just open this up. I apologize, I did not request Citizens' Input if anyone's present for Citizens' Input. Okay. Time for one more?
Oh, okay. The next one is an appointment from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's for Kim Mellon. I move that the Board, the Board of Selectmen approve the appointment of Kim Mellon as an associate member from a full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, effective March 31st to April 30th, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's it? I think we have time for one more, Jane.
Okay. The next one is also an appointment for the Zoning Board of Appeals. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the appointment of Christopher Bain as a full member from an alternate member, or associate member, excuse me, of the Zoning Board of Appeals, effective March 31st to April 30th, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
If we keep going until 7:15?
Okay. The next is a letter of resignation from the Council on Aging. This is addressed to Vicki Low, the Executive Director of Foxborough Council on Aging and Human Services. Dear Vicki, it is with sadness that I must tender my resignation from the Foxborough Council on Aging and Human Services Advisory Board. I will be moving to North Attleboro in the next few weeks, and thus will no longer be a Foxborough resident. I would just like to say that serving on the Board has been one of the great honors of my life, and it has been a pleasure to be a part of an organization that will always be very close to my heart. If there is anything I can do to help the senior center in the future, please let me know. With warmest regards, Colin Haney. So I move that the Board of Selectmen accept the letter of resignation of Colin Haney from the Council on Aging, effective March 19, 2015, with regret, and thank Mr. Haney for his service.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Might as well do, do one more, last one.
Okay. This is the appointment to the Council on Aging. This is the appointment of the replacement for Mr. Haney. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the appointment of Nancy Starkwell as the full member of the Council on Aging, effective March 19 to April 30, 2015, on the recommendation of the Council on Aging and Human Services Board, and thank Mrs. Starkwell for her willingness to serve.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Jane. We're scheduled for a public hearing with NPS. This will be to vote on the Boston Cannons Lacrosse Home Games Application. Jess, would you like to come forward? George, would you like to come up?
Aye. Thank you.
So, make a hearing notice?
Hearing notice. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 181, and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough Revised General Bylaws, Article 5, Section 6, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, March 31, 2015, beginning at 7:15 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, South Street, to review the applications submitted by NPS LLC for the Boston Cannons games, including potential playoff games. All events are proposed for Gillette Stadium. All applications for these events are on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, we are moving forward today with, at least with a different application in front of you. So we're going to start hosting the Major League Lacrosse of the region at Gillette Stadium. So we're asking for, for seven games, one potential playoff game. And sort of the background behind asking or starting to host the Cannons is that their current field is under construction, so they needed an alternate location for this season. And also, we've started to develop, support the game of lacrosse. It's obviously growing exponentially faster than anybody could have anticipated. It's, hosting the NCAA Championship Weekend now twice has been a great event for us, a good event for the town, and so in an attempt to continue to help support the game grow and also further our relationship with the NCAA, we're going to move forward with having the Cannons at Gillette Stadium this year. So with that being said, there'll be predominantly Sunday evening events. The, the game start is between 4:00 and 6:00. We are requesting gates open one hour prior to the event. It'll be entirely on the east side, and we'll only use the east gate, which is the fixed gate. So the field level gate that you see that's in between the pro shop and the ticket office that's set up for most events would not be set up. It'll just be completely closed off, and we'll use that fixed gate that's outside what used to be the temporary pro shop and now the current pro shop. So it'll help cut down on costs and staffing. And both chiefs have been along on every step of the way in figuring out the right operational procedure for transitioning the Cannons into the stadium. We're anticipating between 5,000 and 6,000 people per event. The average ticket price is going to be $24, and parking is included in the price of the ticket. All of the parking will be on the east side of the stadium, so they'll use those P1 through P8 entrances. And, you know, one of the things that we had discussed with the Stadium Advisory Committee was just the Optum Lounge, the Cross Pavilion, some of the ongoing construction that we do have at the stadium that will be ongoing as we start, you know, with the Cannons. None of it will, will significantly impact the operation of the game, but everybody's looped in from a public safety standpoint to make sure that construction lay down areas, emergency egress, everything is well thought out.
Great. Thank you. George, would you like to report on the Stadium Advisory Committee?
Well, we met to review it, and we, again, thought it was a good opportunity to showcase the potential popularity of lacrosse. I just wanted to clarify that Chief Hatfield had detailed that it'd probably be a Level 2 in his comments, and that was based on both sides of the stadium bowl being used. And the clarification is that we're, you're looking at one side.
Yeah.
I think, you know, he had said at our review that he would back to the Level 1, which just is a, you know, manpower to, for safety issues on both sides versus one side. But otherwise, we felt comfortable and recommend to the Board that they, that they would approve this.
Thank you. Any questions?
Not so much a question, but a, I'm very happy that the Cannons are coming, and people that don't know what the Cannons are, it's a professional lacrosse team. I've been bringing the teams in there for probably eight or 10 years over to Harvard Stadium. So what I see, the Cannons do in Harvard, I see that's already on your agenda, the high school nights, the family nights, and military nights, and the clinics. And I know our youth programs are two and three teams strong for each age group, so I see a tremendous push for the families to continue to do this, and it's just a lot easier, obviously, than going into Boston, but I think it's a great fit, and I'm happy that, I don't know if it was a coup that you could keep them here, you know, take them out of Boston, but it's a good fit for Foxborough. Very happy.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions, comments? Okay. We close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing on the Boston Cannons Lacrosse Home Games.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Motion to approve?
We're getting input from you.
I'm sorry, any input from the audience? No? Okay. Motion to approve.
I just have a question. Do I, do we have to take on about insurance on the approval?
I think that's, we've already addressed that issue earlier, so I think we're, but they go beyond June 30th?
Yeah.
They do.
Yes.
All right, so it has to carry the same language that, subject to final language for, final approval for insurance beyond July 1.
July 1?
Beyond June 30th, June 30th, actually. Coverage isn't placed till June 30th.
Subject to necessary insurance by NPL, NPS LLC? Do I have to put a date?
It's, it's, any coverage beyond June 30th. So it would be.
Beyond June 30th.
Any games after.
The policy's good through June 30th. You know, working, still working on that.
Okay. So I move that the Board, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for the 2015 Boston Cannons Lacrosse Home Games at Gillette Stadium, subject to the acquisition of the necessary insurance by NPS LLC beyond the June 30, 2015 date.
Correct.
To cover beyond the June 30, 2015 date, and the conditions set forth by the Stadium Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thanks, Jess.
Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Nice to see you.
Good news.
So we're a little bit ahead of schedule here. Bill, Yuchna, would you like to come up? And are there any other members who would like to come up?
Smartboard dump. Do we use our new technology?
DPW card, will we take on?
Did you write them?
It's one of the Mrs. Cole's.
So.
Anybody want to join me?
I'm sorry.
You're going to sit by, I'm sorry.
They usually do that to me.
So this is an update on our Town Hall Design, and we have members of the Permanent Municipal Building Committee.
I can try and, try and introduce the, the topic for you if you'd like.
Great. Appreciate it.
Okay. The, the committee, as, as the Board is aware, that the approval for plans funding, plan funding has, was approved at the, at the November Town Meeting, Special Town Meeting, and so the firm of LLB has been, has been hired as the design architect for this project. And they have begun their work quite in depth over the past several months, talking and going around with the various occupants of the existing Town Hall, trying to find out and confirm the space needs that was preliminarily done by the, by the working group back, back during the past year. And at this point in time, we have preliminarily agreed on a design layout, which we think will work, and that works, seemed to work pretty well. Addresses all the needs that we have looked at, and even provides for some additional, though minimal, growth, growth space, because we don't want to, we don't want to lock ourselves into a current design that may eventually change a little bit. So if that, with that in mind, we've already provided the, the design layout to the, to the, to the building committee, and the building committee's been actively involved at this point. And so this is an update for, for the Board to see, so they can see the progress we've made. But we have actually shared these, these design plans with all the occupants of Town Hall, so they're all fully aware of what we've done so far, so it shouldn't be any surprises to them. And as a result, we're now at a point where we want to start sharing some of the work that's been done. We have not done anything, we're starting to look at the, the layout of the site as well at this point. That's being done with the, with the work of the engineer, engineering firms, a local engineering firm. And then also, and then at the next phase will be the actual design of the outside of the building, which we have not got into at this point. So I want everybody, the listening public, to be aware of the fact that we have not really even gotten to that point, though we, we all are very clear about the fact it's going to be a colonial design. I mean, that, that part of it's crystal clear. So we're going to, at this point, I'm going to turn over the bill, and he can go through the details of what we found so far.
And I'm going to show, basically, we, we, in working over the last, since mid-December to this point, the first step that LLB did, which was kind of critical, was obviously they met with the administration to kind of get everybody's view as, as far as how this should lay out from a individual department point of view. We've been through this so many times now that I think that, you know, we've got a kind of a presence on how we look at it, but I think having Bill and Mary Beth and Randy and Bill Caspera kind of take a look at it from their point of view also was very helpful. So the first thing they did was they actually schematically took each department and broke it down into what, how they would have to relate as themselves, as if there was no other tenant in the building, it was just them. And that took a while. They, they worked out all of the sightlines, all of the requirements staffing-wise, the storage side. They came back to us with a couple, times with that to kind of make fine tune it, and then they went and sat with each of the department heads and, again, double-checked, are we counting for the right number of filing cabinets? Do we have the layouts that we need for a number of people, and so on? And once they got that to a pretty firm grasp, now it was like, well, how do you assemble all these departments together to make it work? So I'm going to show you, they actually had five renderings originally. It was pretty easy to, to knock two out. They were fairly large, they were very spread out, and they really, on the site, were not appropriate for the site. And so they came down to three designs for us to kind of look at. The first schematic I'm going to show you, I'm going to come back to this one in the end, so they'll, and I'll blow it up so you can see it better. But really what it is, is you enter, this is the first floor here, you would enter here, your Board of Selectmen Meeting Hall would be right here, your bathrooms would be right here, and you'd have a security gate location right here where you could segment this part of the building away. And then you'd walk into what we consider the prime area of, of real estate in the Town Hall, and the areas that get most used by residents. So this is your whole finance department here, assessors, revenue, tax collection, and finance, and then your town clerk's area is over here. This is a main stairway that would go to the second floor that's visible from the outside, and this is a secondary staircase that we would have to go up to the second floor. Second floor obviously has nothing over the meeting hall, but again, in the, in the hallway here, you would have the town manager's area. This is a large storage area, planning, conservation, inspections, conference room, Board of Health, and the two bathrooms on this level. Elevator over here, and also a conference room on the first floor. The second design that they came up with, which basically was taking the same diagram of blocks, because again, we think that the layout of each department is appropriate, and moving the Selectmen's Hall to the far side of the building. Obviously, everything else would be the same as far as spaces, the conference room, instead of being over here, moved to over here. You know, we had the cafeteria or, or break room on the first floor instead of the second floor, but when you looked at these individual town clerks, vault space, that stuff, all was basically the same chunked up sizes of space. And this, this drew some complaints, because quite honestly, this didn't allow us to segment the building and shut it down at night and only leave the Board of Selectmen's Hall open. It gave you a nice potential approach for what you could do colonial-wise in the front of the building, because a lot of colonial houses are the blocks with, you know, additional sides to them, type of thing. But it also, as, as what we saw in that one, was it created a problem for us space-wise, because it came too close side to side. So that was one of the reasons that this one was not as appropriate as far as we were concerned. The third one we had was just the largest of their concepts. It gave you a much more grand and colonial front to it, but it was too, too spread out, quite honestly, as far as we were concerned. You'd have two sets of entrances, you'd have a main stairway, and then you'd have your working areas. But again, your finance basically was broken out to the same type of space, town clerk with similar space, you know, and so on. But this actually was the largest in, in the grouping. It was almost 17,400 square feet. It obviously was not efficient in its layout of, of the hallway space. As you can see, you ended up in areas going down and around, type of thing, which is a lot of waste of space. So after everybody kind of looked at this and the building committee kind of approached it, we all came back to this view as the one that we think is the most efficient use of space. Your hallways obviously are as minimal as you can possibly have in this design layout. But to give you kind of a scope of size, this hallway here is about 10 feet wide, this one here is about eight feet wide. And the reason that eight feet's important is if you think about it, when we now will have counters on both sides, very similar to what you have at the Town Hall when you first come in for the town clerk and the Revenue Treasurer Collector's office, that actually is about 11 feet wide. Okay? So just so you have a scope, when you have people working on both sides, you still have room to, to pass in the middle. If you go to a smaller hallway and you have people working at counters on both sides, you really don't have the space that you need to kind of flow. But again, with only having hallways that go this distance, we really have cut down the amount of hallway space to as small as you can get within the building. The, give me one second here, just going to enlarge it so you can actually now start to see the layout. So if, again, if we go back to the first floor, so what you'll see is that the, you've got a meeting room here that now is about 1,380 square feet roughly. What it gives us is a very, very small, what we're calling kind of like a kitchenette. Two doors that can open up, that you can have a sink, a refrigerator, so that if you were doing a meeting that you had coffee or something at, which we do have it as an example at the library, works extremely well for those type of meetings, but it's just a very small space to be able to give you that type of a resource. We would have our, our storage area, so again, when we're breaking this down, similar to the library, we want to get, get the chairs out of here, because we're going to set up some tables. You have a place to store chairs and to store tables when you're flipping them back and forth. Again, we found that that works extremely well at the library in its process. We would have, obviously, the cable access, having its room right behind you, being able to see what's going on, right, looking right at you, square footage-wise. And then this is a tell data center, so obviously, the one thing that the Town Hall now will have, since we have moved all IT out of Town Hall, the only thing left in Town Hall would be switchgear. So everything else is residing in this building or the Joint Public Safety Building. So we're, we're, we've really, you know, kind of reduced down what we need for our tell data areas. Obviously, we have the elevator right here. The bathrooms meet code. We basically, I think, are one fixture above code. So we're, we're right where we need to be in that total configuration. When you come down the hallway here, this is one spare space that at this point would probably be targeted for animal control. If animal control does not end up in the building, this would be our one flex space on the first floor area. This is the veterans' area. Basically, what we're doing is creating an area that if someone comes in while they're waiting, they have a totally isolated place, they're not in the hallways, they're not in public view, they can sit and relax and not be under the scrutiny of anybody, and this would be the veterans' office. You have a conference room that's shared by everybody on the first floor, so that no matter what's going on, it's off the hallway, so it's not dedicated to an individual department. Again, when you look at finance, what ends up happening is you have your finance director here, you have between your revenue, your treasurer, collector, and your assessor have this area, and then their staff all sits in front of them across this area, and then their staff all sits in front of them across this. The only cubicle that here that is not dedicated to an individual is dedicated to a process, which is payroll. So this technically doesn't have a person that's here that's dedicated for this, but it is a spot that, where we would have payroll away from everything else and it's, you know, because a lot of times that stays out. But it, again, if you had to have that one area of growth, it would be the only station in the finance area that's available. The copy center actually looks large, but this is actually the, the, the large storage area also on this first floor. So even though this is showing a configuration, these are, this is actually equipment, these three items here that exist, copiers, printers for, for munis and so on. So we'll have storage along here and storage along here, which basically has to service all of these departments down here, whether it's office supplies, copy supplies and that type of stuff. Town clerk's office, two staff members, one workstation, the town clerk's office. And then this is a combined vault that basically services all of the document needs of the town. The back section of this is the secured section that the town clerk has to have segregation on. But there's a, basically, there's a gate system, so you can open a door right here, and this becomes a kind of an open thing that both finance and, you know, would use as far as their records that need to be in the vault.
I just had a question. One of the concerns in regard to the finance was the idea of having a, an area of privacy where people can discuss their issues with, like the finance, you know, leasur. Is there, is there space where they would be able to have private conversations?
If they're, if they're going down to that one, that's why this conference room is down on this end near their, their section. So if you're actually bringing somebody in to, to talk about an abatement or talk about a process, if you're not bringing, like, if you're the assessor, you could bring them obviously into your office, it's closed, no one can do it. But if it was a group of people that you were having a confidential thing, it's, it's right off their thing. So they don't even have to come into the bonded area at all. They can come right in here and then the individual can actually go in and have that discussion with them.
And would the, oh, I'm sorry.
If I can just add too, that the offices, each of the offices for the treasurer, collector, the finance director, the assessor, all have doors on their offices so they can actually be privately.
Because I know that was, that was a, that was a big concern.
And that's one of the reasons that you take, in, in almost all of these offices, there's at least the ability to have someone sitting as a guest chair in, in front of you. So again, if someone was coming in on an individual basis on an abatement, they'd be able to come in, close that door, and they'd have working room to do that. You take the finance directors, and the same situation would be true when you look to Mary Beth and, and Bill's offices, they also have a working desk area. Again, if they're bringing in their, their managers to have a discussion or something like that, they don't have to chew up the conference room. They can, they can do that. We found that on the school side works very well for us. Three of us have those things, and we are constantly having meetings in our office. If it's three, you know, two or three people, it's very easy to do. By giving them a little bit of extra square footage, you can accomplish that. And again, not chew up the conference room.
So I'm assuming this is slab, there's no basement?
We are basically looking at a basement that would be just in this area coming down off of this stairway for some mechanicals.
With the elevator shaft?
Yeah, the elevator shaft about this way to here.
Yeah.
So we'll have some mechanicals here, but the elevator will not go to the lower level because it's only mechanicals we don't need to. All right? We are trying to not go into the ground much in this area if we don't have to. And that's why we're keeping all storage up above. And I think that also will serve us better as far as, you know, potentially any problems down the road. If you go to the second floor on this plan, if it lets me move. Okay, so you would come up either through this stairway here or again, through the back stairway. And once you're up into this area, again, these bathrooms will be more visible, so we'll have a sightline, so if someone's using them, you know, it's not going to be behind the corner and someone can't see them downstairs. Obviously, it's because we try to lock that area down that we have the bathrooms facing out to that hallway. Hello? Apparently my battery's not there, sorry.
Technology works great when it has power.
So during this brief commercial break, layout looks really great.
Yeah, at the...
It's very functional.
Did I see a drawing, does it look like, the drawing I saw looked like it was right on top of the existing structure?
No, no.
It was going to be set back, right?
Yes, it's, it's actually one of the advantages of, it's coming up, Bill. One of the advantages of, of the, the new zoning, and Bill Casbira can speak to this because actually is one of the things he pulled out recently, is that our sideline and, and back setbacks allow us really to go back quite a ways in the, on the property. Obviously, we want some space around the building to keep it so that it's, it's not sitting on top of the neighbors, but we do have that orientation without having to go for a zoning.
Variance.
Variance.
And you'll have enough parking in the back and still a lawn in the front?
There'll be parking coming down the front, and then probably about ten feet in front of the existing building, there will be a landscaping retaining wall that keeps that lower level green and the existing trees, the big trees is one of our big things that we want to keep because obviously we think that sizes the property and the building behind it. It keeps the scope down, it makes it really, should really look well if we can get it done. So that's what Big Colony is working on right now. So, okay, sorry about that. So when you come back up, so you have your bathrooms here, you have the Board of Health, you know, department in this area here. Board of Health is one of the one areas that has a phenomenal amount of storage. The amount of recordkeeping they have to do for, you know, the restaurants and permitting and all of that is, is actually one of the heaviest loads that we have in the entire building. Another conference area, again, that services the entire second floor. The inspections Department Secretary will be in the front. Again, they have a fair amount of, of active filing spaces they have to keep available. And then, as you know, they have four different individuals that are their inspectors that come in and out. So there's two places, they're never there all at the same time. So they'll share those spaces as needed. And then the building commissioner and his assistant, the assistant commissioner would be in this area. Planning and conservation, we have basically the, these two offices, both for the planner and conservation agent. This is a flex space. So this is our second flex space in the entire building. And so that, you know, as far as what this can be, I'm quite honestly thinking at the beginning, this is going to be storage for these different departments until they kind of work things out. But if we need it, you know, it, we know it's designed so that it can fit into an office environment.
Full disclosure so nobody gets surprised by this, we, we have talked about the concept of, of having an economic development person at some point, and that would be an office space for that, that function. I haven't, it's not included in this year's budget proposal, of course, but, but it's something we've talked about, and we think that at a point, at some point, that would make sense to keep it in that area.
This is a much smaller, obviously, copier room on the second floor because obviously you don't want people running up and downstairs when you have multi-floor buildings. So this is really just a copier room with, with some storage. This is our, this is our primary storage for all departments up here on the second floor. You then go into the administrative part of it, this, this would be the town manager, the assistant town manager, your two staff members, and this is the one workstation. We have quite honestly, on a regular basis where people come in and they want to look at records and documents, but they don't want to take them out. So there's a, a place that they can actually sit to do that. And then there's a small two-seat waiting area right here, again, if they're waiting to see Bill or Mary Beth in a, any kind of a meeting process. You have your break room here, this is the only break room in the building, so this is what would service the staff. And then you've got, again, tell data here and a small storage area here and a janitor's closet. So, you know, overall, when we originally did the, when the working group did the design and figured out the square footage requirement, we were at about fifteen thousand five hundred. That was based on, obviously, our walking around and taking measurements and taking number of cubes. The one thing that we talked about quite a bit at those meetings was the fact that whether or not we were actually calculating enough square footage for the walking space and the movement space around filing cabinets, around your, your workstations and stuff like that. And we, you know, we tried to use some numbers that worked there. And so we knew that, that would be one area that there'd be a risk as far as whether or not our square footage was close enough. The end result was, and we use the factor of 1.4, the, the 1.4 basically was to add on what are your requirements for hallway space, stairways, and so on. Ironically, the 1.4, we're within 200 square feet on that. So we're at 1.414 as a, as a percentage, so I don't think we could have gotten any closer on that. But in the individual departments, each, each department is, you know, 100 square feet here, 100 square feet there difference. And that's really coming because again, if you, if you look at the circulation you need for people to be able to move around these areas, we're not, we weren't accounting for enough of that in our 15-5, but we knew that that was a risk. We were actually hoping the 1.4 would give us some latitude in that area to make up for some of the differences. So at this point, these two plans basically come out to about 16-5. So they're almost 1,000 square feet above what the original working group had. They're about 1,000 square feet less than what the original KBA study did, which was 17-5. So we're right in the middle between the two.
Just to put things in perspective, the current town hall is how much?
Is 13-6. And obviously, when you're looking at the current town hall compared to this, you're looking at a, a larger vault system. The current town hall has a vault system that's about 311 square feet. This is 480 square feet, so it should be able to handle all of our vault storage needs. It sits on the first floor, so we can basically build it like a bunker. We won't have to worry about it because of its, the, you know, concrete and structural walls we'll have to have there. The other thing is that the current town hall does not have the bathroom requirements that it really is supposed to have for the number of people. So if you look at this, two floors, we've got two sets of bathrooms that beat all the needs that we're supposed to have, has an elevator system that doesn't exist in the, in the current town hall. We have two conference rooms, which we have none in the existing town hall to be able to, you know, have meetings with the staff and, and outside people. And you have a Board of Selectmen's or overall meeting hall room that is about 500 square feet larger. Your current one's about 800, this is 13-80. So...
Seats about 75.
Right. So, you know, we think what we've done, and again, we never want to, and I've been very clear about this with every project that my team has worked on, we don't build and not have any escape routes if something happens that you need a little bit of space here. So there's not a lot of space, I'll, I'll be the first one to admit that. I mean, you only have growth for a few positions, or even if not using positions, a little bit of additional storage, you don't have a lot of space that you're going to expand this building using. But we feel very comfortable that we've, we've accounted for all the space requirements and that we have the right flow. Again, the, the counter space, it was critical to each department. You know, things as we've talked about where someone could be sitting in this office and see, you know, the counter here, if someone wasn't at their desk, they would at least know that and they could get up themselves and go work it. That's true in every single one of these departments. The layout and the view to the front counters is available to every single office throughout the process. It's a very hard thing to accomplish, but I think LLB did a very good job of doing that. I've actually been very impressed with LLB's concepts to this point as far as where they're trying to take this. They, I think, really do understand the colonial design, and they really do understand what we're trying to accomplish as compactly as we possibly can. But also, they'll say the same thing, you don't build it smaller than what you need today and then expect that you're going to be okay going down the road. So we haven't done that in any one of our buildings. I think we've been successful in every building we've built, that we've built what we needed with a little bit of, of extra to be able to survive this.
It's important to keep that in perspective too, that if you're going to build space, build it now, because if you build it later, it'll be much more expensive. So the, if you're going to do something, a little bit, I mean, we're not, we didn't go crazy here, nobody, nobody did that. But I think if we, we were trying to be practical about it, and I think that the space, additional space that's being added here is, is, is logical and, and practical given it's, given its use.
Now, the one thing we don't obviously have any control over, and that's the economy and what's going to happen when we get to the bidding process. We're still on the same track right now to get to a bidding process in the late August timeframe. But I will say that we carried this budget, an all-in budget for just the construction side, not for abatement and demolition of the existing building, at $450 a square foot. The closest building that we have designed and built in town is the Joint Public Safety Building. We spent $390,000, $390 a foot on that building. That building has a significant communications network in it. If not only looking at the dispatch room, there's a huge room right behind it, and there's a large room above the cell section, the Sally Port area, that's nothing but communications gear and, and, you know, cabling and stuff. It's got obviously the communications tower included in that. We have obviously the security of cells and how those all are put together, which is extremely expensive. And then we have housing, because if you think about the fire department, you actually have a second floor that has to have full housing capability, kitchens, bathrooms, showers, all of that. So it's, it would be the most expensive building that a town would build in general, and that came in at, at just under $390. So even at this seven, we, we had originally estimated 450 at the 15-5, so at the 16-5, it comes out to $422 a square foot. So if the economy hasn't really gone crazy over the next, you know, six months, we're really thinking that we're, we're still in line with being where we need to be for the overall budget. And really, in my mind, similar to what we've done with the Ahearn, the, the Joint Public Safety, the library, and even the high school, is these buildings are built to last us the next 30 to 40 years, so you, you have to make sure you have some space available to survive inside that. You know, obviously, we all hope to get smaller and smaller as time goes on, but the reality is, you know, businesses keep growing and, and, you know, we still have issues that we have to face internally as far as the town goes. So with that, I will open it up if you have any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have questions on design?
No, very, very well done. LLB does a nice job and it's, I mean, the graphics are, are easily viewable. And thanks for volunteering for doing this. So what I'm hearing is the original working group, no big surprises from their estimates and budgets. Is, are you looking to go towards LEED on this with the...
We, we will design towards LEED, but we won't go for LEED certification.
Okay.
Be the, the cost just to accomplish the LEED certification itself, as we saw in the library. We got a great grant at the library, it was well worth doing, but in the end, for what we paid to get the LEED certification, then what we paid to, to put into the building, we probably netted about a $20,000, $25,000 savings to the overall project. And we did spend a lot of money on some things that, you know, we may not get our, our efficiency back on very quickly. So I think the, you know, this building will obviously built with, with LED design, lighting, again, high LEED. The heating systems will be high-efficiency systems, similar to what we do on all of our projects, so that's not new to us. The roofing systems will be the, the Sonofil white roofing systems for reflection and, so we're going to build it the way we would build a building anyways. And almost every one of our buildings, I think, would qualify for at least a silver level or bronze level, I mean, LEED certification, whether we went through the actual documentation. The problem with LEED documentation, just in case you, you don't really understand it, that's an entire process of documenting from the very beginning all the way through the end, every step you take, materials you use, and the process, and that's why it's expensive to do. So it's not just that you put better lighting in or put better heating systems in, we do that. It's the documentation of the process that you have to go through to set, to, to certify that you receive that.
Okay. Thank you. And you had talked about, you mentioned the roof with the white roof, but throughout, I've been hearing colonial, which means pitch roof.
This is a pitched roof system. There will be potentially one area, this area here. One of the things we're going to, we're bearing very cautious of is that the mass of the building itself, we, we want to try to keep the mass as you drive up to it, you know, as low as you can. So what we're really considering is this from here to here would be your standard pitched roof. Obviously, this is a pitched roof and this is a pitched roof. This may be just a slightly slanted, not flat, but a slanted back roof. And what that gives us the capability is putting some of our mechanicals on that roof.
So that's what's going to, so MEP is inside?
So it's hidden, it's, it's out of the way, but it's, it really, we've played with some designs with LLB. It actually has a, a great feature that we think we can really benefit from.
So the back left, that's towards the CVS corner?
Right.
All right. And just kind of broad, so we understand the big picture of, of process, the, the budget, the schedule, the public input, what, what this project was funded for, was the design, but it still has to get voted in at the end?
Right.
So, between now and the town meeting vote, can you explain that process?
Yeah. I think schematic design, and LLB was right when we first met with them, they wanted to spend a significant time on schematic design to make sure we had the working flow right. So, they are just, I think, every day they seem to be fine-tuning a piece here and there, so it's like, you know, if I showed you yesterday, it'd be slightly different than today's. Each one seems to morph just a hair as they're starting to... The difference is when they go, so we'll get an actual estimate from them shortly off a schematic design. That's the first cost estimate we get. The next thing they do is they go into design documents, which are actually the documents that we put out to bid. Obviously, when you go to that level, now you're overlaying all of your electrical mechanical systems into this building, and you'll still get a little bit of a tweak at that point and too. So, you know, I want you to be very cautious of size, square footage, and stuff like that. Things will get tweaked a little as they need to get a piece of ductwork down, something or a pipe in an area that doesn't necessarily fit right now. There are some adjustments that happen in that part of the process. So, we're now going to get ready to move on to that next part of the process. That will take us between now and, like I said, sometime in the late summer timeframe for our full documents to be completed. However, in the phase as we're going towards design documents, they're going to start working on the exterior. So, we will start to get our layouts. Once they really lock in the, you know, the square footage and the actual layouts here, which we think we're very close on, now we'll start working on the outside to show you the colonial designs that we're looking at. And, we've looked at a couple different types of options we have as far as windows and, you know, the finishes and stuff like that. And, I think we're pretty comfortable that the design can come, you know, close to what we really want it to be on the colonial side, so... But, that's going to take some time. I think we're going to have a number of discussions about how that lays out, and we'll probably bring a couple of the different designs back to the board again for you to take a look and weigh in on. But, once you kind of get your blocks, your building blocks, in line, it's a lot easier to say, "Okay, what do I have to work with on the outside now?"
And, just the last question. On the DD phase, when it's going to the public, I'm assuming it's site plan review through planning board. Any surprises with variances, setbacks, heights, parking ratios?
No, we'll be under the height restriction, which is the 40 feet. We'll be under that. Again, Bill Casper has done some research for us. We'll be in front of the planning board and site plan review are the two stages that a full design blow-up will be. I know Bay Colony has recently been out there doing a lot of work now that they can find the ground again to try to engineer the site itself and start working with LLB to do the layouts there. So, I expect them to be in kind of a heavy site side of things at this point, so that they can start to really come in fine-tune how the parking will work and how the site itself will work. And, again, they're going to have to have that for the planning board to be able to review the site.
Great.
The entrance is still going to be in the back of the building?
No. Well, what are you calling the back?
With South Street.
South Street, let me go to the next. So, if you look at from this point, this is South Street here. This is Liberty over here. The building is going to be here.
Okay, so it's going to be in the back of the lot?
And, what we like about the way this lays out right now is that we have the cistern that's in this area and we have our other building that's right here. We will actually have the ability to do some nice landscaping in this area that ties those three buildings together, instead of having them look like three orphans that are stuck on a piece of property. So, it actually is going to work out kind of nice, the way you can, I think, pull that all together in its site. It will pull all of our parking here. As I said, we'll have a retaining wall of some sort here, because the grade from this point here to this point here is a 10-foot drop. You don't look at it when you see it currently, but... So, we will be pitching this parking lot down to a point, and then we will have our retaining wall, and we'll have either stairway or access points here going back out to the road. So, this would be a nice green spot, again, with the big trees that we have currently from South Street and the building back here. It's going to scale it better than as the building was forward. It has, it reduces the impact on the two neighbors on this side here, because right now, obviously, the building is right across from them. So, what it gives them is an opening. Obviously, I'm assuming the funeral home's going to be very pleased because it brings parking closer to them. And, as far as the backside goes, again, we will keep this, you know, as green area as possible to buffer again against the neighbor's backside. The one thing that's here, if you recall, is right in this area here, there's a large garage that backs right up there. The neighbors, it's literally right on the line, so obviously, we're not ruining the garage's view. But, you know, and the other house that sits back here, so there's two neighbors here, the other house that sits here is actually way, you know, it's like in the middle of that lot on that side. So, they're going to have a pretty good-sized buffer there between us as well.
Will there be an increase of parking spaces?
No, actually, it's a slight decrease in parking because of the way, obviously, now everything has to meet the codes and the setup there. But, right now, we're showing about 62 parking spaces. We think we're going to be able to get a few more than that out of it. Our existing site's about 78.
So, Bill, the side door is going to come down below. It's not going to go...
So, you would walk in here as the front door.
Right.
We have a door here that we have to have off of that meeting room from a second exit point, and that would, and then you'd have another one right here that's off that second stairway. And, those are your, that's your security to the building. There's only three locations, but this is truly the only location that allows people in and out of the building unless it's in an emergency situation.
And, that was by design to make sure we had, you said, the one main entrance, so that we didn't have multiple exits and entrances into the building.
No, it makes sense. I just didn't know why you didn't have another exit going to the parking lot to the...
To this side? There's a conference room right here, and then there's two sets of office things in this area. So, again, we don't think that the walk from here down the sidewalk to here is that bad. And, we're all wearing our Fitbits.
So, that's the pitch roof you have in the back, right?
This is the pitch roof, but this, yes, this is that area that we're talking about. And, again, it's going to be hidden nicely so that whatever you put up there as far as mechanicals go, we'll do the same thing. There'll probably be a little bit of a parapet type of a design along this edge, but it really gives us some flexibility. I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly if and what we'll have out there, but it does give us an option on the mechanical side, which I actually kind of like from what we can do for air handlers and stuff.
Will there be a noise factor to consider with that?
The only thing is that if there were anything to be out there would be our compressor units, and to be honest with you, you know, with the way the new ones are designed, I mean, the new ones I put in recently, literally, you're standing on top of them, all you feel is the air. They're made now to be very, very quiet because they have to meet all of the standards for noise control. You get into, if you got into the monster ones like we have, we have one very, very large one on top of the library, and I've got a couple very large ones at the Ahern School as an example. If you're standing next to those, those are really chillers is what they are, and those are a noisy thing. We're talking about just actual compressor units that can run the air handlers inside.
You probably have a generator outside?
We would have a generator definitely outside, and my guess is because our mechanicals will be in the lower level right here, that that generator will be somewhere in this area here with some landscaping around it. But, even there, the generators, I don't know if you've heard the one that I have at the Taylor and the one we have at the high school now, the new ones, the encasements on them, if you buy the right ones, the encasements on them, those things come on and they're also, and they're not diesel. We're buying gas power generators. It makes less noise than my truck does, so, you know, they really are quite quiet.
And, where's the finance picnic table located?
Probably in the park here somewhere. I don't know.
Bill, with the new location of the site pushed back, I know it's a little premature to talk about this, but I know it was a big issue when we were meeting as a group. This will allow town hall to operate presently while construction is going on? We spent many meetings debating that fact.
I don't know if you can really see it, but the existing building right now is right here. See this dotted line?
Yep.
Okay. Cuts back in here. So, what the intention is, is obviously to be building back here to have a way of actually kind of fencing this off like this. So, we'll have a few parking spaces here, mostly for handicap and stuff like that during the day, and we'll obviously have to use the roadside, you know, during the day. It's going to be tight. I'm going to be, you know, honest, we've said that since day one, we said that in the working group, but it's a relatively short period of time when you think about it. Even if we have to have employees, you know, be somewhat inconvenienced, maybe we'll do something with a van pool or something, have them park in the municipal parking lot behind the businesses over here. We have some options, is all I'm saying, and I think we're going to have to do it, but it's the only way to save the significant money of having to move twice and go through this process.
Yeah, right. The municipal parking, people forget about it, but it's behind, and then the booth just paved that entire lot, which would be open during the day also.
You know, I don't know how I can do this, but I would say that I even have, you know, the schools have the mini buses that we run, so even if we had to potentially do something, they run eight hours a day. We could probably figure out some way to do a little bit of that if we need to, so...
It's good.
So, once you have the full designs, then after that, it goes to the actual design of the exterior of the building itself?
Well, we'll start the design once they tell us that they've kind of locked in the schematic design. So, we're close to that, and so they'll start working on that, and again, that we'll bring back to you. I mean, I guess what I'm hoping tonight is that you agree with the one that we've all selected as a group. Again, the administrative group met first, the building committee met afterwards, we reviewed all of them, we kind of looked at things. I think the thing that locks us in is the most efficiency, most efficient use of the spacing, number one, keeping the sizes small as we can, and number two, the security side was the huge thing for us, being able to say, "We can run that meeting room and lock everything else down." We've always said since day one, that's a critical component to this building, so that we don't have to leave everything wide open every time we have a meeting, like you have to with the existing town hall. And, I think that's like the McGinty Room, that works out really nice, because it's, once you come in that entranceway at the McGinty Room, and you have your bathrooms there and you have the McGinty Room, and you can't get to any other part of the building. It's a really great concept.
Library the same way.
Library has the lower section the exact same way. We built that backdoor system, so you have your bathrooms and everything else, and there's a petition wall that breaks the rest of the library off and just keeps it so it's, you know, secure, so weekend use and night use and stuff like that is really not as much of an issue.
So, in the selectmen's room, we are going to have the movable petition, so you can divide that space up?
We have that as an option. I think that's one of the things we will bring back as we get closer to the end. I'm going to tell you from my perspective, and it's my perspective only, the petitions, the truly movable petitions we've had in the schools, we've removed them all. They don't work over time, they bind up, they become problems. If it's something we really need, we're going to look at whatever the most modern version of that is in this concept to be able to create that into it. You can see they actually have it designed so that there's a break in this double doorway, and you can actually run that petition there, so you could have a front meeting room and you could have a back meeting room.
Take the one you have and used to have in Dedham, or still have.
Yeah. So, we have the capability of doing it. We're really going to have to look at how we do it to make sure we do it right.
Yeah, they have some really cool concepts today.
Yeah. Lot better than what they had in the past.
Yeah, with curtain walls, movable curtain walls, and stuff like that as well.
And, then, again, that gives you nice flexibility. So, you have two, you know, medium-sized conference rooms for, you know, eight to 10 people, which should work fine, and then you'd have two good-sized, if you break this down, for, you know, bigger groups to meet at night, even if it wasn't, you know, if they didn't need a 78-person room, and they needed a 20-person, but you needed two of those, you'd have those available to you.
Bill, the furniture, is that the actual locations of all the furniture, or is that suggestion?
Well, it's, it is, in a sense, it's the actual, because what they're trying to do is determine all the layouts, and this has been worked with every single department head as far as how it lays out, because, again, what you're trying to do is sightlines, you're trying to do flow, and so if you start moving these things and reassembling something else, the actual space will more than likely morph to something different, too. So, once you start building, unfortunately, a lot of people in the old days would build a building, then they'd figure out how they're going to put the furniture in. You have to really start with what are you trying to fit into a department now and what that furniture's going to look like, and then start to work. Now, you know, there's obviously a million different types of cubicles you can use and stuff like that, so we haven't gotten down to that level. But, what we've gotten down to is how does this have to lay out to make these spaces actually work?
Right, and the employees are good with that? I mean, they've all...
Department heads, I think, have been very good with it. I mean, again, they've had a lot of input through this process to make sure that, we're not building it for the building committee. We never have built a building kit for that. We don't have one, so... So, we're building it for the users. So, as long as, you know, once we get to these stages, we always go back to the users and make sure that we're still bouncing back and double-checking, and to this point, everybody's been in line, and they've actually made some tweaks on a few things that we had wrong or we had an issue with, and we've adjusted that. LLB's been very good to pull that forward, so...
We've had two or three meetings with employees in the buildings, so they'll make sure they have had full input to the process. We will have some public input for the outside design, because, you know, we don't want it to be an issue once we get to the final process, because we know how important this is to the community itself, and we want people to have, you know, the opportunity to at least react to some of the designs that we're coming up with. So, we will get to that process as soon as they're ready to present it. So, we'll be back to you with that as well.
So, just the very final stage of this, when you get all the approvals, then you go into construction documents, these are actually going to go out to bid?
Yes.
You're going to send it out, you're going to get a bid back, and that's the number that town meeting is going to vote on?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't finish answering your question, but that's exactly right. So, once the final documents are all done, the, what we have said since day one was, "Give us a soft cross so we can design it and get all the way to giving you a firm number as a town." And, it's not, it's the first time we've done it quite this way, but I think in the end now, we will actually have contractors' bids in hand when we walk into that town meeting to say, "If you approve this level, we can sign these contracts. That's the building that's going to be built." Obviously, there's always a small contingency you would still carry on that just for potentially some of the unknowns on the site and stuff like that, but it's nothing compared to what you have to have when you...
It's a longer process, but I think in this particular case, it's going to be very finite at the end.
But, you also be ready, if the approval comes, we'll be ready to go.
You're done. You're actually shoveling the ground right after that town meeting.
No, it's good, Bill.
So, you need a motion from us to...
I would say it would probably be smart at this point that you're at least in line with this particular option moving forward, so we can keep going and feel comfortable with it, but I think, like I said, everybody else at this point feels that this is the optimum option we have.
This is design option one?
Yep.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, why not? I'll move that the board of selectmen accept the flow plan rendering as presented by the permanent building committee.
For design option one.
Thank you.
Second?
The second emotion?
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
That's a big hurdle, Jeff. That's great.
Nice job, committee.
Thanks to everybody. Okay, the next item, zoning board of appeals interviews.
Thanks, Bill.
We have, coming before us, Dave Brown, Kevin Powers, Kurt Gagian, and Ari Weinstein. So, Dave, would you like to come up first?
I think we wanted to sequester the other three during the interviews, so if you could do that.
All right, so, we'll sequester the other three candidates?
We have a sequester room that, yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Come on up, Dave.
And, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a statement. Because one of the candidates for this position is the head of my reelection campaign, I'm going to recuse myself from the selection process. Thank you.
Are you one of the candidates? I would. I would, I would just, I think it's probably a good idea to just do that. That's how I abnormally-
Leave the room?
Yeah, leave the room.
Don't forget.
We won't forget you out there.
We'll come get you.
And on that same note, I actually filed a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest. It's called a 23B. I ran it by Bill and then I ran it by Bob Cutler. And the reason being, one of the candidates, Dave, I had worked in the past. I don't have a relationship with him now, but in the past, I've worked with him during the election. So, it's, I feel it's an appearance of conflict, not enough that it is a conflict, but I did file that with a clerk and wanted to know if it's okay with the board to stay on this and participate, but wanted to let you know that, I did file that.
Thank you.
I'd rather do it with four than three.
Yep. Great. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you.
Dave Brown.
Seventeen Marigan Way, Foxborough, of course. So-
Why don't you give us a little bit of your background and why you're interested in the position?
Sure. Well, I moved to Foxborough in 1978 and currently reside on Marigan Way with my wife. I had two children, go through the Foxborough school system and be very successful in college and beyond. I started getting involved more in town government in the early 80s, and that's the way I'm going to talk about this in generalities, when I was on the Stadium Advisory Committee. From there, I had an interest in zoning, started on the zoning board as an alternate, progressed to a full member and on true chairmanship, and that was about 20 years or so of that. And about five years ago, I decided it was just, it was time to do something else and move on, and I've done other things, as you know, in town, including election campaigns, apparently. So, about a month or so ago, the zoning enforcement officer was telling me how it looked like there might be some changes coming up on the zoning board, you know, and maybe I might consider coming back on. I'd had my rest, why don't you come back? So, we checked with our wife first and made sure that was okay. I also made a phone call to one of the members of the zoning board just to see if he was okay with me coming back, and he was fine with it as well. I always enjoyed being on the zoning board. I thought it was an opportunity to help residents expand their homes, perhaps do things with their homes, and I say that, that probably 80, 85% of the work done by the Zoning Board of Appeal are hearings for variances and special use permits within the, within a residential setting. Variances, as you know, involve oftentimes setbacks, involve other things as well, but how close the residential structure or addition comes to deributta lot lines. Special use permits, the zoning bylaws allow certain uses within the home as small businesses, is the best way to put it, hairdressers, architects, I think, and engineers and other sorts of things, but they need a special use permit for that, so they would come to the zoning board. And, you know, oftentimes, when we get involved with those, we would need to talk about perhaps putting some conditions on the special use permit so that we would approach it that way. The remaining of the work, and I'm calling it the 15%, is I often refer to the zoning enforcement officer as the zoning board's cop, is what I call him. And he may issue violations of the zoning act and zoning bylaws to properties and owners, and this is their first step to go to the zoning board and appeal that decision to essentially say they disagree. And everybody presents their cases or information, and the zoning board would rule on that, sometimes overturning the zoning enforcement officer, sometimes saying, this is fine, he's right, he's tripped, and the zoning board's bylaw is right. Other things that will come up, again, rarely, will be, somebody may come in and ask for an interpretation of what the bylaw means. They haven't actually done anything yet or constructed anything, but they have a question. They may have been told that they can't do something under the bylaw, or they're not sure. Quite often, it comes up with definitions in the bylaw. What does this mean? I want to do this, does this apply to me? And then, the last one, which probably oftentimes is the least frequent type of thing to come to the zoning board, but often can be the most long cases, are the so-called 40B cases, which is a separate section of the zoning act, and it specifically states that the zoning board of appeals will hear and issue comprehensive permits under the 40B process. We always wondered, why is it the zoning board of appeals? Why did they get stuck with doing these things? Because they are long. And I was told, when the 40B was put together way back when, they, the legislature was looking for one place that would be common to all towns, and they all had zoning boards. So, you know, we enjoy doing these things. As chairman, I was involved with, I think it was three, perhaps four, 40B applications. The largest one and most recognizable is the Lodge, which is in the industrial park. There was also one on Walnut Street, one on Coacetic Street, and these were smaller ones. And there was one, I think, at the State Hospital way back when that never got built. So, we've done 40Bs, we've been involved in situations where controversial, filled up the room, filled up a school auditorium, you know, with some of these cases. I don't think I'd want to be on the zoning board if that was a monthly event, but it can happen. We're comfortable with it, we're comfortable with going back. I'm also, if you wanted, well, of course, come back as an associate, you know, I won't come back as top dog, not a problem. I found the zoning board over the years to be, everybody worked well, and the five members of the zoning board all equally participated, were equally respected with their opinions, and the only thing that was different was when it came down, the vote, the three regular members got to put their hands up. But oftentimes, if one of the three members had a conflict, couldn't make the meeting, these kinds of things happen, then one of the alternates would be selected to sit in. So, I don't know if I've gone on too long, but just, that's kind of where I come from on all this.
Dave, I've got a question. I'm going to ask every candidate, but what key attributes one have to possess to be successful on the zoning board of appeals?
Well, I felt it's to listen, that's the big thing. I always felt, when I was on the zoning board, to give everybody, you know, the abutters and the applicant, the opportunity to present what they have in mind and receive it with respect for their opinion, even if, and I was sorry, even if on occasions that they're really not on base with it. So, that's one key attribute. I think the other is to put some upfront time in it. I always made it a point on any of the cases to do a minimal a drive-by before the meeting and review the file. Because quite often, these residential cases, you'll have the owner telling you, they want to build out to the oak tree. Where's the oak tree? You know, well, driven by there, hopefully you've seen the oak tree. So, I think that's another preparation.
Okay.
I mean, those are two, and getting a note of bylaw, but that's, that's in front of you and you have time to read it.
Thanks.
Okay.
Jim, any questions?
You have more experience than I have on the zoning. I mean, when I first met you, I think you were re-codifying the zoning back then, and I was on the AdCom at the time. And I think we shot you down on some of it because I think you were trying to dot the i's and cross the t's, but you were also looking at the Route 1 corridor. And I just felt it was a little too rushed, but you've been doing it for 20-plus years. I guess in a nutshell, I look at it sometimes as a thankless job, and you do all this work and they shut you down at town meeting or something, but why, after all these, why do you want to come back? And I know you said it, but just in a nutshell, to get back involved at this time?
I would, I enjoy it very much. You know, I feel as though I was, you know, was suggested that I should volunteer. I do enjoy it. I've been retired now, for, as some of you know, for about a year, and I guess I'm ready to do new things or repeat old things. When I got off five years ago, I was maybe a little bit burnt out and I was very busy with things at home and contemplating retirement and lots of things, so.
Good, very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Dave, with, you know, with the development of the master plan and economic development, at some point, something's going to come to the zoning board of appeals, some big project that's out there somewhere. We don't know where it is yet, we don't know where it's coming. Do you see the zoning board of appeals having the ability to rule with flexibility in the name of economic development? Or is it, this is the zoning bylaw, this is the interpretation, it is what it is, sorry?
Well, the thing I have to, it's, I think it's a little bit hard to say that you can change the master plan and use that as a ruling, as a reason. You have to remember that most of the zoning board business is Chapter 48, and it lays out in general terms the criteria for variances and special use permits. So, that might be a little difficult, and I don't think really, you know, we rely on the planning board to do the planning, to develop these things, and I would suspect if things come up that weren't contemplated under the master plan, they would look to rezonate, to do that. Now, there is one thing, though, with Route 1, I didn't think to mention, one of the things that's changed in the five years is we now have a brand-new signed bylaw. And we used to say, some of us have said over the years, is you make some changes with the zoning, it's like throwing up the sign that you're open for business. And I suspect with this new zoning, with this new signed bylaw, we're going to hear a lot on that. And of course, that's, Route 1 is really what most of that is about. So, I hope that I answered your question and didn't dodge it too much, but I don't feel I can change the master plan. Or would be able to.
I was going to ask you about the signed bylaw, what you thought it would bring forward.
Well, I think we're open for business.
Yeah.
And the thing I like about it was, I have read it briefly and gave some input way, way back when. I like the fact that the old bylaw, your signs, what was allowed, followed the district, the zoning district exactly. So, you get up on Route 1, there must be a half a dozen different zones up there, so depending on where you are, that was what you could do with the signs. They've redefined and broke the town down for signs into three districts, and Route 1 is all one, so it's uniform, what can be done, what you need variances on for signs up and down. I think that's great.
Dave, you have no conflict with any projects that are going on right now in your backyard or anything that you-
No.
No? No, okay.
My trailer might be parked too close to my neighbors', but I don't know.
We've got complaints.
I'll move it if you want.
Any other questions? All right, great. Thanks very much, Dave.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Take note of the trailer over the way, Bill.
Dave, would you mind sending, hey, Bill, would you mind sending Kevin Powers in?
Bill?
Bill, would you mind sending Kevin Powers in? Thank you.
Second math room, Bill.
You have them in separate rooms also?
No, they couldn't give us across the hall, so they gave us down to the right the second room math room.
Oh, I got you. I thought you put them each in a different room.
It was a math problem.
There's a pony in here somewhere.
Can I hang around if I want? I'm not so sure.
There's only a few to take, it's probably not appropriate, we, given the fact that we sequestered everybody else.
I should.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, thanks, Dave.
Can I fly Mr. Powers? Would you wait for him?
Dave, you want just to tell him? He's here somewhere. I think he didn't think of the home.
So, as we're waiting, can I give a quick shout-out to somebody or something? As I was driving down to Connecticut on Saturday morning, it started to snow. I said, there must be a J.C.'s event this day, so, God bless them. Just a shout-out to the J.C.'s, anything to do with the Commons or community, they had an Easter egg hunt on Saturday morning, and I think the adults were stressed trying to put it all together. The kids didn't care. It was a good showing, but, you know, between that type of stuff, the nativity scene, the decorations, the candidates' night, you name it, it's a small, tight group, but they've been going around for 20, 30 years doing it, so, all the thanks to all they do for around town. And I think the last event they had was a road race, and it snowed on that morning a couple weeks ago, so, God bless them.
Where was the East Street?
Where was it? On the Common, they have it every, where have you been?
It was snowing on the Common, I thought they would put it off her fields.
So, Jim, if we stop the J.C. events, it'll stop snowing?
Maybe we have them in August to bring the cold weather.
The word I heard is that the Easter, Easter bunny actually got a little bit muddy, unfortunately, but other than that, it was a good event.
So, welcome, Kevin Powers.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Can you just state your address for the record?
Kevin Powers, 44 Prospect Street, Foxborough.
Great.
02035.
All right. So, Kevin, why don't we start off, why don't you just give us a little bit of background about yourself and why you're interested in applying for the position?
Sure. I grew up in Foxborough, graduated Foxborough High School, class of 1999. My family still lives in Foxborough. I love the town. I think, you know, sometimes where you grow up is sort of incidental to the values that you have or the, you know, priorities that you have in life, but I think for me, this was a very, very important place that shaped a lot of my beliefs, a lot of my attitudes, and a lot of the things that I value. And I care about it. And, you know, every now and then, I've, you know, gone away for college or for work early in my career, but, you know, I seem to keep coming back, and it's a place that I love, not as a matter of convenience, but as a matter of choice, as a matter of value, and as a matter of the unique qualities that it has as a small New England town. I work as an attorney by trade. I work with law offices of Jim Thrasher in Mansfield, in a practice that runs the gamut from probate and estates to real estate to civil litigation to criminal litigation and the whole nine yards. And I love it, and I've been working as an attorney since 2006 and have been in private practice, have been in government service, and have served as law clerk for a judge. And I love what I do, I love where I live, and I really like Foxborough. I'm interested in serving on the ZBA for a number of reasons. I think Foxborough over, you know, about the last 10 to 15 years in particular, has been experiencing a number of changes. And as the town wrestles with the direction that we're going in and how best to achieve all of our mutually competing goals in the best, most effective way while simultaneously preserving the character of the town and what it has been historically and what it can be in the future, I think it's important to have in mind all of those goals and all of those values. And I think just by way of one example, I think right now, sometimes we hear a lot about growth as one goal and as preservation of the town as it has been as another goal. And I think it's important to take responsibility as much as possible for ensuring that we achieve both of those things. You're not always going to be able to achieve every single growth goal and realize exactly as much revenue as you might like to while also preserving the town and in the way that it has been. And similarly, you're not always going to be able to preserve the town exactly as it has been while realizing as much growth as you need to, to keep it affordable for people who have not only decided to move there, but also grown up there. And I think trying to walk that fine line, you know, trying to work through the art, not the science, of managing the growth of the town is a very, very important aspect of town, of realizing the town future. And I'd like to have a role in that because I care passionately about this town.
Kevin, I'm asking this to all the candidates, I think we're probably going to be somewhat uniform in our questions, but what key attributes or attributes, I will say, you can fill them in, but would one need to possess to be successful on the zoning board of appeals?
I think, an ideal member of the zoning board of appeals would need to have an understanding of the competing priorities that the town faces, the competing goals that the town faces, and an understanding of the fact that you don't best realize the goals of a town moving forward by standing for only one set of those values or another set of those values, that the best way to see a town move forward is through compromise. That, when you have competing priorities, as the town certainly does now in all sorts of major decisions that we have to make and in all sorts of zoning-related changes and variance-related decisions, that there are valid positions on all sides. And you have got to be able to realize compromise when possible because that's the way that the town is going to most effectively move forward. In addition, I think some kind of relevant experience and background is important. I think it's important to have a membership of varied backgrounds that brings something to the table that can be applied to the role of a zoning board. And I think in terms of what I bring to that, I work as an attorney and am very familiar with understanding regulations and statutes and in the sort of complex research that it's my understanding the ZBA involves a great deal of. Obviously, this is not a position where you'd be practicing law, I realize that, and I would expect that if we have actual legal questions, we turn to town council. But at the same time, I think it's important to have the ability to understand and work through some of these- to understand and work through some of these complicated issues of, well, you know, what is the town obligated to allow in terms of access to various utilities, or in terms of variances? What has been considered reasonable in other circumstances? And furthermore, I think something that, that might be particularly applicable, when I was a law clerk years ago, happened to have the opportunity to see quite a few appeals from litigation in the trial courts that went up to the appeals court of decisions by trial court judges on zoning board matters that had been appealed from municipal zoning boards. And I think seeing those and seeing not only the legal issues, but also looking at cases and thinking, wow, when a zoning board makes a decision that the parties involved, for whatever reason, just can't live with, it winds up costing the town a great deal in litigation costs. And I think having that in mind and having that perspective and that sense of, you know, it's really important to get these compromises and these decisions as right as we can and as reasonable as we can get them. Because if we don't, then it's going to cost the town. Whether it's a developer deciding, you know what, your zoning board just didn't make the right call, and you're not allowing us to properly build as we need to in order to realize the value of our property, and them taking the town to court, or whether it's neighbors who believe rightly or wrongly that the ZBA in a particular decision just didn't recognize the important character of the neighborhood of a part of town, and just can't, can't fathom the, the particular development that, for whatever reason, has been allowed, and then, again, bring litigation against the town. I think it's fundamental that the membership of any zoning board of appeals have a constant sense in the back of their minds of, we have to get it right. We have to get it right because getting it wrong is very costly to the town, not just in terms of goodwill, but in terms of the bottom line to the town budget.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Any questions, Jim?
Looking at the, the application, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we just appoint you to the Board of Recreation?
Yes.
Okay. It's, it's not listed anyone here on government experience or positions previously held. You've got an interest in the Board of Recreation, but currently you are on the Board of Recreation. So what would happen with that effort? Could you hold two positions?
If, if it was considered ethical by town council or, you know, by the appropriate state authority, and if it, if it wouldn't present any other issues, I'd be glad to. That said, obviously, if there was any kind of conflict, I would recuse myself from any, you know, any, any decision on, on either board that would interfere with my responsibilities to the other. For example, if, if there was a zoning decision that was going to have an impact on a recreation parcel, I would assume that under those circumstances, the appropriate ethical course would be to recuse myself from any, any decision of that sort. I, I think that probably the application doesn't list membership on the Board of Recreation, probably lists that I've, I've served on the advisory committee in town, but it probably doesn't list serving on the Board of Recreation, because I suspect that that's probably the application that I filed before being appointed to the Board of Recreation, when I think I was expressing an interest, not coincidentally, in both positions. And so I think at that time, I probably hadn't yet been appointed to the Board of Rec.
Okay. Yeah, there's no date on it, so it may have been?
Yeah.
Before that. So I, I don't know the answer, but if, if there's a conflict of, of being appointed to two separate boards in one town, which would you pick? Because we've been an obligation to our past appointment, or the board does for Recreation, and now there's EBA. Where, where do you see that? I wish I knew. Does anyone know the answer? Can you serve on two?
Yeah, Gary Whitehouse is one of the people.
Two appointed boards, a zoning board and a Recreation Board?
Yeah, I know he was on AdCom, and I wonder if he's also on the...
Now, if you're on AdCom, I don't think you can be on any other board.
Yeah, I don't think, that's right. There are limitations, certain types of boards.
There's an appointee to the personnel wage board, but it's...
Yeah, I don't think you can hold a seat on two appointed boards. So I guess that's the question. If that's the case, you're already on the Rec Board, and if the board votes to go for the zoning board, I, I guess, one, we can't appoint somebody that's already on a board, so you would have had to pull off already.
Are you asking, what's his preference?
Well, it's his preference, it's ours. We can't appoint somebody that's already on the other board.
So we can find out.
So it's a chicken or the egg thing, I guess. Or, I guess the question is, where do you see, if, if you've got the choice, would you stay on the Rec Board, or would you, I guess it would be the zoning board since you're here tonight, knowing that you're already on the other board?
My, my understanding is that membership on the advisory committee excludes membership on any other board. But my understanding is that membership on the Board of Recreation would not exclude membership on the zoning board of appeals. If I'm wrong on that, obviously, you know, I, I'd have to make the, the choice that you described, but my understanding is that Rec and zoning are, you know, aside from particular instances where a decision is going to have a conflict.
Yeah, I'm not trying to play a gotcha. I just don't know. I, I don't, I don't know what the answer is.
It's probably, it's probably not an issue.
And we'll find out.
We'll find out.
Okay.
Okay. Dave, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Do you do any zoning or land use in your, in your practice?
I do not. And it's, it's my understanding at this point that there is virtually no likelihood of conflict at this point, based on my current practice. If there was, obviously, I would, I would recuse myself, you know, completely from anything that, that had even the whiff of, of, you know, any, any conflict or relation between any, any work that I'm doing in my private practice and, and responsibilities to the town.
Thank you.
Kevin, just wanted to ask your thoughts about the new sign bylaw, how you think that would impact the work of the zoning board of appeals?
I, I think it, it, it all comes back to, we want the, the town to be able to achieve the revenue that it needs to realize growth in, in a, in a manner that's consistent with the character of the town. In, in terms of, in terms of signs and signage, it's, it's great to see new opportunities for the, the town to realize revenue from various advertising mechanisms, including signs. But by the same token, it's, it's important to not, you know, see, see Foxborough become visually more consistent, say, with, with a city much larger than we think of ourselves as being in order to realize that revenue. I, I think each of those sorts of decisions would have to be on a case-by-case basis. But, you know, again, those are the mutually competing goals. And ideally, if there was a proposal that seemed to weigh far too much in, in the direction of, say, something that was thoroughly inconsistent with, with the character of the town, hopefully, the ZBA would be able to work with the developer in, in terms of the, the shape of the proposal, the shape of the project. Hopefully, the, the developer's goals could be realized without necessarily having to see the entire project, you know, pulled off the table. Hopefully, in most instances, reasonable people can compromise in a reasonable way.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kevin?
Just one question. I'm probably going to ask it to, to all the candidates. I didn't ask it to Dave because I know he attended the meetings, but have you been going to or have you gone to the ZBA meetings? We have a letter from the chairman saying, you know, please interview these, the four people, but have you sat through meetings and participated and got that dialogue with the different applicants and the different boards?
Yeah, I was, I was at the last EBA meeting. I, I haven't attended with great regularity in the past. It's been more occasional when, when there's been a particular issue here or there that, that's seemed particularly interesting. But I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold myself out as a, as, as, as a regular at, at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Our next candidate, Kurt Yegian. Good evening.
How are you?
Kurt, would you like to state your name and address, just for the record?
Yes, my name is Kurt Yegian. I live at 5 Oakwood Terrace in Foxborough.
Great. Thank you. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much for having me. Appreciate the honor.
Great. Could you just give us a little bit of information about your background and why you are interested in applying for the position?
Sure. So I grew up locally in Attleboro, Massachusetts, and after high school, I joined the military, was in for 12 years, working for an engineering squadron in the Air Force. When I got out of the military, I went to architecture school in Boston on the GI Bill, and worked for a number of architects in Boston over the years, and then decided to start a company 16 years ago now that provides architectural and MEP existing building surveys using three-dimensional laser scanning and some of the most advanced technology out there to capture accurate data of buildings, provide that information to other architects, engineers, municipalities, building owners. So that's what I've been doing for the last 16 years. It started as just myself, and now it's a company that measures about 20 million square feet per year. We have 26 employees in the three states, and we're continuing to grow. And working on some high-profile projects that you might know of, like the Kennedy Institute that was dedicated yesterday, we actually did the 3D laser scanning for the United States Senate Chamber in Washington, created a 3D model of that, and then the architect used that as the basis for their design for the Senate Chamber. Locally, we've worked at projects like Chestnut Green here. We did the existing survey for that project before the construction and design. So that's basically what we do. We, we use our, our, our technology and our expertise to really create highly accurate existing and as-built drawings of buildings, surveys and analysis of these buildings. Why I want to do this? I've been trying to, you know, donate those services to the town for a number of years now. I've approached the school department, the historical commission, even the police department, because the tools that we use are the same that they use for crime scene analysis as well. No takers yet, but I do live locally, and I have, you know, ties to the community, wife and two kids here. So I thought that this technology, which is very expensive, would be, would suit the town for a number of purposes. And I've been looking for a way to get involved and kind of give back, and that just came to where I am tonight, actually.
Okay. Thank you.
Super. I'll start off. Yeah, we're trying to be consistent with our questions, so for the viewers at home, they're going to hear it four times. But, you know, in your opinion, what, what attributes do you think are necessary for someone to possess that in order to be successful on the zoning board of appeals?
Sure. Clearly, objectivity and knowing perhaps both sides of the, of the equation. You know, being the people who, being somebody who's been on the design and development side, the construction side, and also someone like myself who's been before the zoning board of appeals to try to get a variance on his own home in Foxborough, and understanding that process. So I think that's very important. I also think it's very important to understand the building industry and how different trades work with each other, not against each other. You know, the site surveyors, the architects, the builders, town officials, those kinds of things. I think communication skills to people is essential. And I, I feel very comfortable talking in groups of people about subject matter that I, that I understand.
Thanks.
Great. Jim?
Sure. Have, you spent time with the current zoning board, going to the meetings and participating and seeing how that process works?
Uh, yeah. I, when I got the call a couple of weeks ago, I attended the last zoning board last Thursday, or two Thursdays ago. So I did see that process, and it was interesting because there was two, you know, there were two cases up, and one was a residential project that, you know, some of the neighbor was building a house, and the neighbor's other concerns. And one of them was a larger project where 20 houses were being developed. So it was good to see kind of the small and large thing. But I've also been involved when I, I tried to get a variance on my other home, to go through that process with the builders and architects and so forth, and getting the zoning board's decisions, and then, you know, refining my design to meet their needs and so forth, yeah.
Okay. And, and right now, so you lived in Attleboro, and now you've lived in, now you live in Foxborough, but there's no...
Well, I grew up in Attleboro, and then when I got out of the military, I moved to Boston, where I went to school, and then I lived there for about 10, 11 years. And I've been resident of Foxborough for about 11 years now.
Okay.
I bought a home that was built in about 1795 and restored that, sold that recently, and bought another home that I currently live in about two years ago.
Okay. And there's no, where you're living or your business, there's no conflict with any projects that are going on right now? Conflict of interest?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. How does your knowledge of existing structures relate to zoning changes and subsequent requests for variances, understanding that existing structure was, was zoned one way, but over the course of time, you know, zoning bylaws have changed, have been amended? With your knowledge of buildings, how, how would you be able to relate to, to someone coming to the zoning board of appeals for a variance?
Well, I mean, what I do every day, I, I, like, you know, you might hear in attorneys, I stick to the facts. I mean, what, what I do is, if you have a building that needs to be remodeled, for example, you will call me in, I will do that analysis, I will take the measurements, I will tell you how big it is, how tall it is, and do the drawings for you so you can ultimately do your design. So I understand, you know, dimensional aspects of these buildings, and how one building relates to another in a disconnected and connected way, because we often do things where clients are trying to combine multiple structures into one, for example. So we have to understand how sites relate to buildings, how shadows affect other buildings, how heights and distances relate to each other in design aspects. So that's what I do every day, and I think that understanding how buildings are constructed, the language of buildings, as they say, you know, is, is essential to understanding what it takes to take something down and then rebuild it in a way that is suitable for the town and, and the neighbors. Yeah.
Thank you.
Kurt, I have a question about the, the recent sign bylaw that was just approved by the Attorney General's Office. Any thoughts that you have in terms of how that would affect your work on the ZBA?
I have to say, I'm not familiar with that, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Kurt?
Just an off-the-cuff question. You're saying you're bringing potential survey services to the different school or police, and no, no takers. Why is that? Are we not ready for that type of technology? There's just no use for it right now?
I, I frankly don't think the technology is quite understood. When I spoke to the school board, basically what I tried to kind of distill down to them was that if you were going to renovate your school and you need existing drawings, you know, some architect will charge you thousands of dollars for that. I am, I will do that for you for free. Is basically.
Should have been here for the discussion we had a few minutes ago.
Where were you? What about the DPW may have some need for that. Have you spoken to the DPW director?
I haven't, no. I mean, I mean, each one of our tools is, you know, depending on what it is, it's 100 to $300,000 tools. It's the most advanced measuring equipment you can buy on the civilian market. We have it here in Foxborough.
We have not talked yet, but we will.
Yeah. But I think you're right. I think it's just a lack of understanding.
I think so, too.
If people understood it, I think you had a lot of takers.
I have some material for the, for the board to look. I just brought a basic overview of my company, and if you wanted to, if I could leave that with you.
Absolutely.
Agree.
Great.
Hey, thanks, Kurt.
Thanks very much. Nice to meet you.
Thanks for coming by.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lord.
Okay. The last person we'll be interviewing is Ari Weinstein.
Familiar with this. It's amazing. It's like a, it's like a modern-day cat scan for outside and inside. So a quick shout out while we're waiting, too? Have another one? Foxborough Cable Access, I don't know if you've followed them over the last month. They, they covered every basketball team, high school, which did phenomenal this year, all the way down to second and third graders, so you could watch, you know, your little kid play on it. Transitioned into the MICA over the weekend, all the plays, and now they're doing the spring stuff. Probably 90... Probably 95% volunteer effort, so if you're at home and you see someone with a camera, they're usually a volunteer. I mean, Frank does our stuff as a volunteer. But I know last year, some of the spring sports, they were doing, I think someone said 10 events in one day, and it's just amazing. So, if you get a chance to step in and help them, that would be great.
Hi, Ari.
Evening.
Evening. Could you state your name and address, just for the record?
My name is Ari Weinstein. I live at 112 South High Street.
Good evening, Ari. Welcome. Why don't you start with just giving us a little bit of information about your background and why you're interested in applying for this position?
Okay. I'm a US history and political science teacher at Attleboro High School. So, my investment in civic responsibility is something that I engage my students with on a regular basis, and something that I feel is important, and I think it would be well worth my time to live it as well as teach it. Specifically, I'm interested in the ZBA because of the proceedings that have been engaged with the Fisher Street development, which directly impact my neighborhood. I've learned more about the 40B law in the last two months than I ever could have imagined I would have known, and I would say that I'm very eager to serve the community that my wife and I have adopted as our home for the last six years. That would be a short summary of where I'm coming from and my general interest. So, hopefully you might have some more specific questions.
Ari, we're trying to be consistent, so that some of the questions, we've already asked the other candidates.
Sure.
What attributes do you think a candidate on the zoning board would have to possess in order to be successful?
Honesty, integrity, and I would say, most importantly, transparency. I've been deeply concerned throughout the process of the Fisher Street development that there's been a lack of transparency from a number of quarters. The fact that our state rep has known about this proposal for well over two years, and that the neighbors weren't included in any discussions until the proposal was revealed in the reporter on Christmas Eve. I found that deeply troubling, and I would like to provide my neighbors, and both in my neighborhood directly, but also in Foxborough as a whole, with a candidate who will take their concerns as a primary focus. I don't know if that distinguishes me from other candidates, but it is definitely something that I think you could say is true of me.
But you'll tackle a wide variety of projects.
Oh, sure. I would, I would say, I guess you could say my concern goes back to maybe the casino issue. The proposal for a casino out on Route 1 would have had very minimal impact on my neighborhood over on the other side of town, but I understood the impact it would have on other people in town, both direct abutters and certainly the neighborhoods surrounding Route 1. And so, I would say that my concern about the casino proposal had very little to do with myself, and had much more to do with a general concern for Foxborough as a whole. It's because of the specific proposal on Fisher Street that I have become more aware of what goes into the zoning, in particular with the 40B project, and I would like to provide my services, my passion, my sense of concern well beyond this individual project.
Just super, thanks.
Jim?
Yeah, well, one question I had for all the candidates, I think you answered, and thank you for your candidness. My question was, is there any particular project that there's a conflict or the reason for being on the board? Having heard that, if you're a direct abutter or you live on that road, do you envision yourself participating in that ZBA process which is coming forward?
I would hope I would be allowed to. I don't consider that to be a conflict of interest at all. I consider that to be a very direct interest. It's that specific concern that got me interested in the process as a whole. I would say there are existing conflicts of interest that I have had concerns about pertaining to this. I don't particularly think it's up to individuals or boards in town to help facilitate handover group massimizing their profits, which I think is something that may have been engaged in. So, I would say that would be a conflict of interest that I'm concerned about. If constituents felt that me being involved in a process and pertaining to that was a conflict of interest, I would respect that wholeheartedly. My goal is to represent the people of Foxborough.
Okay, fair enough. In attendance of the ZBA meetings, have you participated and met the board and?
We've not. It hasn't gotten to that level yet with this particular proposal, so.
Aside from the 40B on Fisher Street?
Aside from the 40B, no.
Have you attended any of the ZBA meetings?
Nope.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is the proposed 40B really the impetus for you being here tonight?
I'd say it's the original impetus.
With the understanding that they have to go before the zoning board of appeals
Sure.
for approval? And if you were appointed, and they did appear before the board, do you think you can remain objective?
I think absolutely. I would say that despite what I would say is inaccurate and unfair criticism in the Foxborough reporter by Mr. Hickey about his beliefs about our neighborhood, I think everybody in our neighborhood is open to the possibility of development there. I think nobody is opposed to the owner of the property using their Fourth Amendment rights to develop and do something with their own private property. What we're concerned about is the size and the scale of the proposal, and simply the size and the scale of the proposal, and making sure that what goes in there is appropriate for the neighborhood. I think that's a philosophy I would take to the ZBA under any proposal, that what we're looking at is people's rights to develop, and balancing that with the people who abut and their concerns and needs as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Are you at all familiar with the other zoning bylaws of the town?
I've been reading a lot about them, sure. Yeah, I mean, I have no intention, if I were to be appointed, of going in unprepared by any stretch of the imagination.
And just curious if you've had an opportunity to look at the recently approved signed bylaw, and if you have, if, how you think that would affect the work of the ZBA?
I would have to admit, I am not familiar enough to answer that question thoroughly.
Okay, no problem. Any other questions?
That was a good overview.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, it was very nice to speak with you tonight.
I appreciate the opportunity to come before you all, and I hope I get to serve the people of Foxborough. This is a town that my wife and I are very happy we've moved to. We've been here about six years now. We have a 19-month-old son who's going to go through the public schools, and we're in it for the long haul, so I would very much like to do something more than just live here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ari.
Thank you.
All right, Sharon. Sorry that we're running so late, Sharon.
So, in the big picture, we're going to come back to this later?
Yeah, next week. Just think about it for a week.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, when we, at our next meeting, we can have a session.
And you want to just maybe just let folks know what's going to happen with this? The, we talked, I talked to the chair about this issue prior to tonight's meeting, that given the amount of information and the amount of number of folks that you've met with tonight, it's probably appropriate to wait for one week. And you have a meeting set for next week, next Tuesday night, so that'll give you an opportunity to think about what you've heard tonight, and then come back with a recommendation next week.
Good grief. Thank you. Good evening, Sharon.
I was last here on the 3rd of March, and we went through the regulations of the Affordable Housing Trust. This board made several suggestions. I incorporated those, and I guess we're here to finalize it and figure out how you adopt a regulation and get this thing moving. I've been delighted. We've had a number of folks call, and they're anxious and willing to serve on the trust, which is good.
Can you summarize the changes that you made from the first meeting?
The changes, there was a suggestion that the terms be staggered. There was one place where it still said the selectman may appoint, and it's been changed to a town manager appointee, and to my knowledge, everything else is the same. As I pointed out on the 3rd, the planning board spent a lot of time with AdCom and interested citizens. The powers that are given to the housing trust have been modified from what the state law would require. This regulation proposes that dispersments may only be made with the authorization of the board of selectmen, so that they're not off spending money on something that there isn't community support for, and that in order for the trust to borrow money or pledge trust access or grant mortgages requires town meeting action, and that's something that the state law says that the trust can do. And we felt it was more of an advisory board, and something that would work with existing boards to facilitate making this happen. Again, the planning board, I'm sure, would love to do this. They have a very full plate with all the development that's been going on. Least of all, all the applications from the town of Foxborough.
Sharon, the town meeting approved a sunset provision for this.
Yes, they did. July 1st, 2016.
Okay, so I'm just, and, you know, I don't know if you will have fulfilled the necessary activities within that time, but say, say the sunset provision comes, and this is sunsetted, what would happen to the assets of the housing trust?
The housing trust at this point in time has no assets. The money that is mitigation paid by Mr. King, which is in an account set up with the planning board, I think that to transfer that money, and I haven't met with Randy on this, might take it from being mitigation to a gift, or somehow change what the monies are.
Wouldn't it just stay as an island? There's a way to bring it into the general funds?
No, we would have to return, I believe, to Mr. King.
Oh, you would, okay.
If it's not spent by someone, be it the housing trust, the planning board, or other designated town boards, within a reasonable period of time.
Right, and that was part of the urgency, really, to bring this forward now.
Right, is that we're collecting the money, and we don't want to lose it.
Beyond the sunset date, do you see any longer-term need for this trust?
I do. Once the town hits 10%, we're still subject to comprehensive permits, but they turn into a friendly comprehensive permit process, wherein the applicants would come to you and essentially negotiate what that 40B is going to be like. And I can see the housing trust fulfilling a recommendation to the board of selectmen on future 40Bs, for example. And I can see them working with the housing authority or other existing town boards to facilitate moving things along. Part of my frustration is the percentage of the affordable units that can be local option is very, is not all of the units. And I think if we're giving up so much in the zoning and giving up so much in terms of support for the projects, we should make sure that folks that live in our town get first crack at affordable housing units, and it's limited under the state law. So, these affordable housing trusts, which would be under a separate set of rules, we could be planning more for people who live in the town now.
Thanks, Sharon.
Sharon, the, I mean, the document's well-written. It's 14 points of definition and purpose, but just from a very layman's perspective, if you could describe it, in order for this to work, you need money and assets, and at the end, you need to spend it on moderate and low-income people. So,
Right.
if Mary Jones wants to donate $20,000, or there's a developer that wants to do linkage or mitigation.
Right.
So, from that first idea all the way to turn the doorknob on a rental or a building thing, how does this work?
The housing trust, as you said, has 14 different powers. I've seen affordable housing trusts do moderate rehab on existing homes for low-income people in town, so that they don't, aren't priced out of the community because they can't maintain their home. I've seen housing trusts do energy efficiency projects on homes of low-income people, so that they're not, their furnace isn't operating at 40 or 50%, but at 95%, and their fuel oil goes that much further, all the way up to actually constructing or pledging the money for a portion of a very large project. So, it's determined based on the needs, and you all participated in the housing needs study that MAPC did for us the first year under South Coast Rail, and we heard that what the town needs are houses for, housing for larger families, housing for elderly and empty nesters, and other types of housing, essentially singles, you know, the kind of homes that aren't being addressed by, for and by bedroom mega mansions, that cost $800,000, $900,000.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. One, what's the timeframe to get this going?
Well, it's, as your fellow board members have pointed out, there's a sunset provision. The trust, unless extended by town meeting, expires January 1st, 2016, which is 16 months from now. So, it would be nice to give the trust a chance and see if it actually accomplishes anything for the benefit of the town and townspeople.
So, there's funding waiting already?
The planning board has housing mitigation monies, which have been paid in part. There's a schedule that Mr. King is paying that money. So, they would like expertise and assistance in figuring out how to best spend that money and get the most bang for the buck.
And how much is that?
In total, over the two years, will be $320,000.
And once the trust is established, it doesn't preclude the trust from applying for grants through HUD and MHFA and other?
Does housing, does it preclude them from working with Habitat for Humanity, or the Foxborough Housing Authority, or other boards?
Okay, thank you.
Actually, my questions have been answered with this discussion, so I'm all set.
Almost, almost set, Sharon. So, really, then we have to, tonight, take a vote to approve housing trust regulations and any other actions that we need?
Well, I am not an expert. When the planning board adopts regulations, we have to advertise twice in a paper, the first advertisement at least 14 days prior to our hearing, give people notice that there are regulations that are being considered, I assume.
We don't have that same requirement here.
Oh, okay.
So, we've advertised them publicly.
Oh, okay.
This is being discussed tonight, so we don't have the same level of requirement.
Have you received any negative responses, or anyone opposed to it, just because of the stigma of, quote, affordable housing?
No, we worked very hard prior to town meeting action to develop these regulations, to think about the extent to which we wanted to have the powers limited. There was a lot of sense that we didn't want to create a powerful board that wasn't accountable to anyone. We wanted a board that worked with existing town boards and would bring an advocacy- We wanted a board that worked with existing town boards and, and, uh, would bring an advocacy for housing as much as anything else to the forefront. So I think that, that we, we talked to a number of boards, citizens, we worked closely with AdCom. We had people call us and make comments and tried to address all their concerns through this, this bylaw.
It's been a lot, or two, three-year process?
It has been a long process. Uh, to Mr. Keegan's credit, he's really been instrumental in keeping us pushing along and getting this, uh, really moving and, uh, you know, we're anxious to get going. I need one more board meeting to attend at night anyway, so.
But, but I think one of the things that people were concerned about, uh, they didn't want this thing to be lingering for imper perpetuity. And that's why the sunset clause was, was put in there.
That's correct.
So if it works, fine, we can extend it. If it doesn't work, say goodbye, so.
And then the money being deposited with the planning board would remain with the planning board.
So the decision to extend this, if necessary, depending on the timing of the projects that are identified?
I believe, I believe since that was a town meeting article, you would, we would look to go to town meeting next May. Make an assessment, is it working or not working, and ask for an extension or eliminate the sunset clause altogether. I don't know what, what the decision might be, but let's give it a chance.
Next fourteen months could tell a lot.
Very well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for all your assistance and guidance. I appreciate all the time that this has taken on behalf of your board.
So, um, John, could you make a motion?
Sure. Uh, I move that the board of selectmen, um, approve and adopt the, uh, regulations of the Foxborough Affordable Housing Trust as presented. Sharon Watson.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'll file these with the town clerk tomorrow.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to give Sharon a lot of credit for that, too. I mean, she, she gave the credit to me, but really, she's the one that really impeded us behind this project, so. She's the one that had a lot to stay on top of it and kept me on top of it as well, so just want everybody to know that, so.
Okay, um, next item, Mary Beth Bernard. We'll talk about the DPW contract for us to vote on tonight.
Yes. Um, you should have in your packet, um, the memorandum of agreement as, um, we discussed in executive session, which was later ratified by the union. Just to touch upon some of the unique things, um, you know, since the inclusion of a DPW, this, so this represents both the highway and the water department employ- employees. Because it was an existing bargaining unit, we did agree to go to a two-year contract. Unlike the previous contracts we've bought, brought to you when it was a newer bargaining unit, we only did a one-year contract. So, um, the terms of this are two years. We've done just some of the articles as you flip through. We've defined, uh, came around a definition of holiday, uh, pay a little bit more. What defines a holiday? If it's a state holiday, what days it's celebrated on, just so that when we do have, for especially this group, the on-call weekends, which this happened a lot this year, um, we know, they know in advance what they'll be paid, um, and how it will be paid. So underneath, um, we've, we've added a couple of new allowances under work clothes and shoes, just a very small increment that increases boot allowance from four fifty to four seventy-five. Most members need two pairs of boots. This winter again was another example of why, um, they used a lot of outdoor clothing. Uh, it also gave a very small incremental increase to the mechanics tools. Um, the mechanics kept our stuff running through the whole year. We've replaced, uh, we talked about replacing a very, um, reasonable sum of money if, if eyeglasses get, um, damaged during the course of their work. We have, um, instituted a rotating roster, which was again, this year, it was a new, um, plan with three supervisors that had three rotating teams so that we always knew who was on call, uh, for snow and emergency events, um, such as water breaks, things like that. We defined when a supervisor can actually work with the group. Because the supervisors are now in the, um, soon-to-be-formed Steelworkers Union. So, um, it was a whole, a question about bargaining unit work and the assigning of supervisors, so that's been clarified. On page four, if you take a look, um, the, uh, terms of the agreement is that we kept the existing salary schedule with a two percent cost of living increase. And, um, that's in keeping with all of the other collective bargaining agreements. We discussed a performance evaluation tool, so to advance to a step, we, we, um, started discussing the, the document, provided a sample for, um, for the union to look at. And, um, it was basically agreed upon, you know, might be some tweaking of the document. And then, um, we defined the summer schedule again. There's, um, because of the earlier daylight, um, it's been desirable to work a longer day, um, and then with a shorter workday on Friday. And, um, members aren't, it isn't mandatory, uh, depending sort of on what crew you're on. It, you know, works to their benefit to, some people to work with this summer schedule. So we defined that a little bit better. And then we, uh, had a long discussion about comp time, uh, for, and talked about maybe removing a provision for comp time because in municipal contracts, you can't do comp time. And, um, we decided to keep it in. It was important to the guys who are working, especially this winter with tons and tons of overtime. If they work a sixteen-hour overtime shift, they like to sometimes maybe take eight hours of that, bank it, and use it before the end of the fiscal year as a, a day off. So we have limits on comp time. You can't, you can only accrue up to a hundred hours and it has to all be taken on June thirtieth. So, um, we kept that, the comp time provision in, long, long discussion about that.
And that's going to be managed tightly?
We had, yep, we actually had a meeting between, um, both highway, water, Bill, myself, Randy, accounting, to talk about a system of checks and balances. There has been, to being, that being said, there has been a system in place for many, many years with putting in a slip of how many hours you're going to take, and then when you're going to take it, you put in another slip and running on an Excel spreadsheet. But now with Munis, we're going to actually create a code and it's going to get tracked right in our payroll system. With a back, uh, a backend sort of Excel spreadsheet checking balance.
So at any time, somebody could say, what's in my account?
Yes. Yep, actually, we'll show on paychecks, as far as I, could show on the paychecks as we were discussing that.
Yeah, we're trying to get that resolved.
Yep, so we had a long discussion about that, um, about how to manage that and track it.
Which was very productive, by the way. It was, it was very productive.
It was good, it was good, yeah.
Mary Beth, I think I, I might have missed one thing last time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in termination pay, um, you refer to employees as permanent employees. And, and that, that phrase has been sort of being drummed out of the, uh, you know, personnel descriptors over the last few years. Um, you know, no one's permanent, obviously, and you don't want to give any indication that perhaps they are permanent. But throughout the course of the contract, is the word permanent employee used a lot?
The, the reason we use permanent is, maybe there's a better term, but, um,
I always use regular, full-time.
We just want to make sure it's not a probationary employee who actually has to pass a probationary term before they can actually accrue.
You could, you could describe it as any non-probationary employee.
Or any employee who has passed their probationary period. Yep.
It's just, if there's an opportunity along the way to start to eradicate that descriptor.
That's a very good point.
There are definitely better ways to describe it.
Regular, full-time is a, is a regu- is, is more standard, standard language. I agree.
Again, we did some housekeeping with, um, a lot of the contract had HR director in there at the last rendition. So now it's town manager or, or designate, um, and, um, we clarified two other small things. There, there's a water detail that's done at Gillette Stadium by a member of the water department. And we talked about detail pay and like police contracts and fire contracts and wanted to use an actual hourly detail pay in here. But went back and looked and there's an agreement with the stadium that specifically says it's going to be paid at time and a half. Um, so we have to respect that, that, um, contract. And we've just, you know, clarified it in here, that they'll be paid at time and a half.
We talked about that last time, but where there's an agreement with the town, if that agreement changes, then this contract is not correct. Why, why would that be in a contract versus if it's an agreement with the town for a private business to do it? Why does it have to be in the union contract?
I think, um, it was sort of a group decision that.
Yeah, I think it was, it was, it was a reflection, well, it was, the idea was to not change it into a detailed pay. Um, the, the union was not supportive of doing it that way. They want, they, they were supportive of keeping it as an hourly overtime, overtime pay. We, we, we went back and forth on that issue and that, and they, and they decided to keep it the way it was so that it's consistent with that.
Was it in their contract before?
Yes, yes, it was, it was that one, yeah.
And it was the same, it says it's bolded here and underlined, so it look, makes it look like it's new on, on F, the.
Well, it's been practiced that way consistently.
Yeah, it might be a current practice, but I'm always hesitant to put it in somebody's contract.
No, you know what the, the question was, is if the game's on a Sunday, their contract says they're going to get paid double time. And in the, the agreement with the, um, stadium, no matter what day it is, if it's a Thursday night game, if it's a Saturday, if whatever, the agreement says it's going to be paid at time and a half. So we had to clarify that because the practice and the contract weren't in.
But if you read this, it says, "The current practice of paying one and a half times the employee's regular rate for the stadium water detail, as agreed between the town and the stadium, shall remain in effect." That has nothing to do with their contract, though.
No, but, but it, it, it also, it, it keeps the same practice in place, so it was, they wanted, they wanted it to be double time. And the, and the, and the, and the, and the answer was, well, that's the agreement we've had right along. So we would actually be changing, giving them more, more compensation to do that, that same detail.
The union made the proposal, isn't it, aren't we supposed to get paid double time when we do this detail on a Sunday? Because our contract says double time on a Sunday. And so we went back to the agreement and discussed this and said.
Not double time, it was time and a half, okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Strictly for water department?
You need to have the, the T two, they need to have the certain water certification. Uh, there are about three or four levels of it. You need to be, it couldn't be any employee who has the water certification. Um, and it's, you know, they're the only ones allowed to touch those valves. If patent, if they had to switch from one water system to another because of an emergency during the stadium, it has to be a certified water operator doing it.
That's the detail at the tower, right?
Correct.
Yep. Um, and then just finally, the last thing we changed was the grievance process. There was some, just confusion about there not being accurate steps spelled out. The steps were fine, the process was fine, it was just the length of time in between steps. We, we determined that. And, and then we've, we've discussed going forward, we'd like to streamline grievance processes across all the contracts. Everything, they're all very different, so this, we're kind of making an attempt to break down the language so that at some point, all the contracts will be consistent.
Now, was it this contract or was it a different contract where they had a special provision for a unique employee that got carried over? It was actually spelled out in the contract? Yeah. You remember what I was saying?
A side letter, that was the dispatcher's contract.
Oh, that's what it was, okay. Because it disappeared on this one, but I guess it was never there.
This one doesn't have a side letter. Again, we, this was a really amicable process. Um, I think both sides were, were pleased. It was respectful and, um, we solved it in very few meetings. Um, it was, it was good.
That's great.
Nice.
All right, so, um, we need a motion to approve the contract publicly?
That's correct.
Okay, um, I move that the board of selectmen approve the Foxborough Highway and Water Employees Union A F S C M E contract.
I'll second that.
Covering the period July two thousand fourteen through June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Just want to say thanks to Mary Beth and to, uh, I think Leo was involved in that, put to her for a little bit, but unfortunate effort. But, um, this was really her first contract, yes.
It's refreshing, though, that these are being worked amicably. It's really nice.
Well, I have to also give a lot of credit to Randy, is like always there with the numbers and the history. And, and Roger Hill was a great resource during this time as well.
So my thanks go to all those folks who are working these details out.
They're a good team.
That's right.
The next item is the discussion regarding the spring warrant articles.
There's really just a couple items left for, for discussion. One is the Personnel Board article, and I'll let Mary Beth speak to that. But the other one is the, is the, is the, well, the one remaining issue on the, uh, on, with the Water and Sewer Board. And because there are still some, uh, items that we think we nearly need to discuss, uh, to, to follow, have further discussion on, I've asked that both, both boards get together for a workshop discussion next week, uh, to finalize their, their positions on this. Because I think if we have a, a little more discussion on this, we can try and come to a, a resolution that might work. But I, I'm reluctant to, to have the board take a position on this at this time until we have that, that, we have that full discussion and, um, and listen to everybody's sides on this. Because I, I don't want to get to a position where we take some town meeting where we haven't really, you know, come to some reasonable position on it, on both sides. So I, I think another, a further discussion next week might be helpful to, to try and bring that along. Um, my understanding is that there, there may be some discussion about this tomorrow night at the AdCom meeting. But even then, at that point, I'm going to try and limit that until we have the, the opportunity for everybody to have a full, full discussion. Everybody has an opportunity to weigh in on it.
So when you say next week, you're talking about next Tuesdays on a scheduled meeting?
Next Tuesday, yes. Next Tuesday's meeting, okay. So I'll let Mary Beth address the issue on the, on the Personnel Board.
So there are still two open issues that we need to wait on. Uh, one is the steelworkers' contract, where, um, we have one remaining bargaining session with them until, um, the deadline comes for, for you to look at it and then AdCom. Um, so we're meeting with them on Monday. We're coming to you on Tuesday if an agreement is reached. And then go to AdCom on Wednesday. And, um, after that, it would just have to go to a fall town meeting if we don't have an agreed-upon contract. That being said, that's also holding up our, um, personnel bylaw. Because right now, the personnel bylaw lists all of those steelworker positions because they were formerly under the bylaw. And so we kind of have two versions of the personnel bylaw going, one that has the positions in it, one that has them removed. So that we may just, without a decision, uh, or if there's no agreement with steelworkers, we're still hoping that there is, um, we would be bringing to you, um, a not-so-changed personnel bylaw. But maybe in the fall, it would have considerable changes if that contract comes for ratification at the fall town meeting. So, um, the language changes for personnel bylaw will, will happen because of the Town Manager Act, there's going to be some language changes where it either said HR director or, um, Personnel Wage Board. It's all going to refer back to town manager in, in some of those instances. Um, we have discussed at length the new tuition policy that may also be in there. We're at the beginning stages of discussing a really interesting vacation accrual policy. This, just to clarify the way that we accrue vacation, but I don't know if we're going to be ready for that yet. Uh, we only have one more Personnel Wage Board meeting, um, and that's next week.
Is that scheduled?
Yep, it's the eighth. No.
Seventh.
Seventh.
Oh, it has to be the eighth.
It is the eighth, you're right, it's the, yeah, that's right, that's right. So the very last, um, meeting, the fourteenth, that will be brought to you. So we, um, we're meeting before the AdCom meeting and to talk about, um, that. So we're really right while we're preparing version A and version B of this personnel bylaw. And, you know, it may end up, uh, that we make better comprehensive changes if it's in the fall. But, you know, we're going forward with a positive attitude that we could be bringing you a very changed bylaw. We're just running two versions right now, a red line and a black line.
Yeah, red line and not-so-red line.
Yeah.
So, but, but suddenly with the Steelworkers Union is really the, the first trigger and then you can work off of that.
It really is. It, it has a lot to do with how the, the bylaw will be shaped going forward. Because we, we, right now, if we, if we make changes to it, it could potentially impact the existing employees. And we don't want to get into, you know, blurring the lines there again, so.
They have to be in one bucket.
Exactly.
And, and a vacation accrual policy change for only eight employees or nine that would be covered by this bylaw would not be a huge undertaking for the finance. would be covered by this bylaw, would not be a huge undertaking for the finance and payroll departments and accounting to change accruals and work in munis. But if it included all of the steelworker positions, they are all connected to different salary tables in the system, it would be a bunch of different vacation tables that would have to go. It would be really a lot of work and unnecessary burden on staff. So that's why we'll probably run two versions until we determine where we're at on the 14th.
Mary Beth, if you look at this spreadsheet, the, the one col, one column that says date sent to AdCom, the stabilization fund for the southeastern regional school, I thought, did we send that over already?
I believe they have that correct.
Is that one?
That's the one that Randy's, Randy's been working on with, with you, were you working on that? Or who is, just Randy, right?
No date next year.
Yeah.
I believe they already have that.
And then the CIP budget, didn't, that's, that's over there already? I think they voted on that, right?
They acted on that the other night, so they're all...
Yeah, those have gone.
And then the things over the CIP, those are the ones, the operating budget reports are committees?
Yeah, there's still a few small items of them.
Yeah.
They're finalizing those.
Finalizing.
Yeah, operating budget will be before you, next meeting on the 7th, with, with that information, and then it goes finally to AdCom the 8th.
Yeah, they're going to complete it on the 8th.
We're, we're making our final wrap-up decisions tomorrow on that, on that whole, on the budget process.
So by next, by the 14th, you'll have seen everything if it's going to go forward. But we're getting there, we're checking them off.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Any, any thoughts about how the process has worked this year in comparison? I mean, I just...
This is good.
Yeah, I like it.
Very nice.
Good, all right, that's, I'm glad to hear that. So, I mean, if we, we certainly can do a, you know, a, you know, a, you know, a breakdown of what we've done again later on, if we want to do further changes to it. But just to kind of, we just want to make sure that the process is, that nobody can say to us later, "We didn't talk about this early." That's really important. It's really important to me that you, that you all have that information up front, and that you're comfortable making decisions on, on information that you have in front of you.
Now, this tool has been great.
Next year, you're going to have a tablet.
That's right, you'll have a tablet next year. That's news, we hope, that's right. A lot of that, that, we get the support on that.
It's like putting a monkey on a spaceship.
[laughing]
Now, the final recommendations of board of selection to AdCom, have we, and apologize, I can't remember, have we voted physically on these?
That will be next week, that will be on the 7th.
So we're going to go through all these 25?
Go through the whole thing and...
You've been voting these, and then we're bringing, then we brought them to AdCom?
That's right.
That's how you've been doing them?
I thought so, but we have a final, so the final recommendation to AdCom is just completely blank on this, so either get rid of it, or...
We can probably just check those off.
Right.
Sometimes we waited till the end, sometimes we did it. You know, when we're looking three months ago, I don't remember which ones we voted on.
We've been working from a color-coded copy that belongs to the AdCom. We should probably merge the two documents.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if, if it's there, then it should show up in this.
If you beg on going, we're going to approve it.
We'll give you a cleaned up version next week.
Yeah, because sometimes we just forget which ones, there's so many of which ones we voted and haven't voted on.
Randy does the color-coded ones, it makes it really interesting.
Yeah, we're working on color-coded ones, we should merge the two. But everything, the practice has been to flush it out, bring it to you first, then go to AdCom. And always running it through town council through, during the process, too.
That's really working out very well, going through town councils.
Yeah.
How has a town council been?
Oh, very good, excellent.
They've been responsive?
Very responsive, and you'll, they'll be, I invited them to come next week as well to the meeting, because in case there are any legal questions that come out, we want to make sure we get all, everything out, and if there's any questions on any side.
That's, that's our council, but if water and sewer are bringing their council...
And water and sewer will bring their council as well, my mom. So we, we want to make sure that everybody's comfortable where we're at.
Bill, is item number 24 amended sewer service area map? I don't see we have a date, we sent that to AdCom. There's nothing really holding that up.
No, they, I think they've actually added on there.
You know what the question was? The one on that, I think it was Ginny had asked for, what's the usage for each of the addresses?
Right.
And I asked Roger Hill to get that.
Oh, okay.
We're going to get that for the next meeting, just so you can see it.
Okay. Thank you.
We should have that. Okay. Okay.
Next item is Bill Keegan, Town Manager update.
All right, um, it's been, it's been busy around here lately, needless to say, but dealing with some kind of interesting issues right now. The, I met with the Historical Commission and Historical Society in the same room recently, and tried to find a way in which we can get them to, to be, to raise additional money to, to really support their efforts, because they're, you know, they have really a lot to contribute to this community, and they do, they've done a lot for the community. And so I want to make sure that we're able to keep that going in the right direction with supporting a lot of the historical components that we have here, and a lot of the artifacts that we have. So I, I met with them last week, and I actually suggested there was a, the Denham Historical Society is a very, is a very structured program, and it's, and they have a, an excellent director who I spoke with today, and she, and she's actually offered to come out and meet with them, to kind of give them some ideas on how they can actually, how they can, I can, they can further improve their program. And, and certainly they can ask any questions that they have about how they can do, do things a little bit, do things a little bit differently. So I, it was great to see them all in the same room, because obviously, they, you know, it's important that they support each other, and that they, they, you know, they're folks that, that they put a lot of time and effort into that, especially at Memorial Hall. And, you know, to the extent that we can actually help them make that, really make that really a gem of the community, you know, a real focal point, I'd love to be able to see that happen. So, I mean, I think we're, we're going to do some more along that line, it's going to take a little time, but we're going to get there. I think having some additional ideas, and, and Vicki, to me, was always a great resource of, of information and other resources that, that she has connections to. So I think she'll be able to share that with this group, and see what, see what takes us. Next issue is the trash program, and I have to tell you, this is one of the most unique setups I've ever seen. The way it's currently set up, it's not really, I'm not really sure what to call it, because it's a combination of things. So I, I've been working with the board of health to try and develop a regulation, because there really isn't a regulation in place. But by the same token, it, it's really a free market system. And I'm really hesitant to, to change that, because it seems to be working good. But by the same token, we have a contract with, with, with a contractor right now, that contract is up on June 30th. And so I actually have given them notice that, you know, we, you know, that, that contract is up, but we still want to have a conversation as to how that might change or stay in place, depending upon how that works out. So we're going to have a further conversation, I've asked for the, the board of health to meet with this board on the 14th, so I can sort of lay out the issues and the concerns I have. But again, I, I'm, I'm really hesitant to change something that seems to be working, and it's with, with two companies, but the problem is, is that both companies, as it's currently set up, neither one of them really, really be fully profitable with, with splitting the business the way it is. So we have to kind of look at that and really think, think that through a little bit more. But at the same time, I'm not sure I can regulate having the number, the number of contractors here, because I'd be regulating free enterprise, and I don't know if I can do that. I don't know if the town can do that. So it's really that, that kind of a discussion that we have to have.
The only, the only, the essence of the contract is just to have Russell pick up the town trash.
That's essentially it. But unfortunately, unfortunately, the other side of that is that the other contract in town, which happens to be A.J. Dooley, has 55% of the business right now. So it's not profitable at all, really, that I can see for the other company to be doing that. So the question I have is, okay, I'm, I'm fine with the way it's working out for the residents, I want the residents to be happy about it, but at the same time, I, I want somebody to pick up the town's trash. So that's what we've got to, we've got to work our way through that, to make sure that we're not, end up with, with a cost factor in the end. So, so I, I got to unravel that a little bit, and I need some help, some help and direction on that, so that's the purpose of the meeting. I, I think the, the board of health has made it clear that they, they want to be clear that they're not housing it in their operation. I'm not asking them to do that, I'm just needing, needing one, one help with the, in developing a regulation that they feel comfortable with, but by the same token, we'll be, we'll be handling a lot of, of the details.
So the board of health is who decides, who makes up the regulations for trash?
They said, they, they set the regulation when it comes to board of health issues, so there are a lot of things that would, they have to be concerned with, but I want, whatever regulation I set and bring before you, I want to make sure they're comfortable with it before it gets acted on. And I want to make sure that we, we, we share the same view or vision as to how this program is going to work.
So would the board of selectmen have to approve the regulation developed?
I think so, I think so. That's my take, that's my, my belief at this point. I've had a conversation with town council already about this, and he said, "You're right, this is interesting." And so...
Quite a history on it.
Yeah, it's quite a history behind it, so, so I'm trying to make my way through it, and I think we'll get there, but it's just, it's going to take a little bit of time to figure out all the pieces.
So, and, and Summer, Russell has a contract, and that expires when?
Expires in June 30th, but they, but the town has the option of extending it for, for two more years.
Mm-hmm.
Two more years. So I've actually notified them that we're interested in doing that. I don't know what, what will come out of that at this point, but I, I at least want to preserve our rights.
Yeah.
So we can at least have that conversation. So I've notified them, I sent a notice to them today.
And, and the, the onus, so if the contract is to get, get extended, it's by the town? Russell really can't say no, because that's what the contract that they signed.
Right, and, and the, the only question that I have at that point is, you know, what, what's the, the parameters at that point? Because I don't know, because he, he has a signed contract. But it seems all the, the rules changed along the way, where we don't, we no longer bill things out, we don't bill, bill anything.
But, but that was all written into the contract?
It was.
We're not, we're not declaring house for the bills. By signing that contract, they took ownership of all that.
I see.
And then, I think, then the, the extension is up to the town.
Right, exactly.
I'm not sure if Russell can leave if he wanted to. But I'm probably too much detail now, but there's a lot of history in that whole process.
Yeah, lots up behind that issue. Want to comment at front, obviously, needless to say. On a pretty positive front, the street, we're, we're working on a streetlight program where we're, we're looking to acquire all the town's streetlights. We actually owned a fair amount of them, but we, we're looking to acquire the rest of them, so then we can actually change them out to LEDs. Working with a company to actually help us purchase those within our existing budgets, so that we're not spending additional capital dollars to do that. So our existing appropriation will allow us to acquire the lights as well as change them out to LEDs, which is, which are long-term lights, which require far less maintenance than, than the current lights and sodium, sodium vapor lights, et cetera. So we're working on that currently, and we've had some pretty positive developments enough in, in, in lieu of how that's happening. So we're trying to figure out the pieces of that right now. So hopefully we'll have something, you know, within the next month to, for you to take a look at. All right. The next version of the newsletter, town newsletter, which I have to give Deb Jarvis a lot of credit for, she's been doing a lot, a lot of work on that, will be out tomorrow. So we'll look for that every, every, the first of every month, we'll come out with a new version. It's starting to take on a life of its own, which is great, there's a whole idea, so a lot of people are starting to submit stuff about their operations, their new employees, things going on in people's lives that, that people are happy to talk about. And I think, and just sort of give, you know, some recognition to folks that are doing their job very well, and I think, you know, it's actually working out really well. So, thanks Deb for doing that. And then negotiations are continuing on, as, as Mary Beth noted, about town hall, the library, we start negotiations on August 8th, April, I'm sorry, April 8th. And then police, we start on the 6th, with some informal discussions, which is next Monday, so Mary Beth will be leading that discussion, and I'll be involved in it as well, but I've got some, actually Thursday, this Thursday, we have a preliminary discussion.
They're meeting on the 2nd with the...
On the 2nd with the police, and then we're going to have further discussions along the way. So it's all informal at this point, but we're going to try and, try and ramp that up pretty, pretty quickly. And the final budget numbers will be presented to you next week. A meeting with everyone tomorrow at the executive level to, to make some, to make the final recommendations, and I'll, I'll provide everything to you by next week. Another positive note, New Public Works Building Foundation, the footings have been poured, and I'm informed that the module building has been completed at the factory, and the project remains on schedule for completion by the end of May. So we'll see that up and running, so. That's it.
Very good.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, so we have a couple of sets of minutes to approve.
Are we done with action items?
No, the minutes.
The minutes.
Is that all that remains?
Yep. So first set is from December 16th. I had just a couple of...
I, I had one, Quanzar's, KWA-NZAA.
Yep. Yep. Just on page one, the very first sentence, Mr. Brew asked Mr. Keegan if the statement was in response to just looking at, if you could just insert the meeting times. The, I'm sorry, the agenda times.
On page two, if you could change, just change the sentence and make it read better. Attorney Spillane, non-possessive, went through items three through 10. Just needs to be cleaned up.
Joe Lathrop, who had applied to become the manager on the liquor license, was subsequently heard in February of that year, indicated that the policy for the ID scanner was to be used on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, in busy nights with larger-than-usual crowds. But then it said Monday through Sunday nights, the scanner would not be used. I think Sun, it should be Sunday through Wednesday nights, the scanner would not be used at the door, but be behind the bar. Because we, they've covered Thursday, Friday, Saturday, okay? Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, it does.
All right.
Page seven, after the six-foot-five bouncer, in the fourth paragraph. I'm assuming that word was meant to be carding, not, not itting.
IDing.
IDing.
IDing, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Carding.
But I can change it to carding.
Page eight, second paragraph from the bottom. Waxies proceeds to the ABCC for an over-serving situation. Jim, this is your discussion, I think, were you talking about the fact that, you know, as you're describing this, that Waxies then goes on to be found guilty of an over-serving situation by the ABCC?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So Waxies goes on to be found guilty of an over-serving situation by the ABCC?
That's fine, yep.
Okay. And then on page nine, in the second, from the paragraph from the bottom, fourth line down, Mr. DeVos wishes they were upfront about the ABCC. This is about the fact that they did not bring forward...
When they were asked if they had violations, they said no.
So just change width to.
About.
Yeah. I think that was it.
That's all.
That's it. Something I said.
No, no.
We have one CD.
It has nothing to do with you.
Okay.
Probably central one, so.
That's right.
So.
I'll, I'll tell you later.
Yeah, we'll tell you later.
Elsa?
Yeah.
I move that the board of selectmen approve the meeting minutes of December 16th, 2014, as written or as amended.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.[1687.83]